All right. Good evening. Welcome to the February 24th, 2020, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. I will note that the printed copy of my agenda says 2019, but we're all sure that it's 2020, so thanks for making it in the right year. Tonight, we have a number of items on our agenda. As I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, if you are here to speak on one of these items and you're not already part of one of the agenda items, please fill out a form and get it to Patty as quick as you can. So what we'll do, actually, item three on the agenda is public comment for items not scheduled for public hearings, which are everything on here. There's no public, actual public hearing scheduled. So we will take those items here in just a second after we do consent docket. So, anyway, consent docket. Item two on the agenda. On our consent docket tonight, we have our meeting minutes from meetings on February 3rd and February 10th, and we also have some budget amendments that were discussed in full at our February 10th meeting with our financial staff. Counselors, any questions, comments, or motions on the consent docket?
Motion to accept the consent docket. Second.
We have a motion and second to accept the consent docket. Please vote. We've voted five to zero. Consent docket is approved. All right, so that takes us to public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I have four people signed up to speak, and we will take them in the order that I have them. So Brian Kahn. Please let us know your name and your address for the record. You have, will have three minutes to speak at this, during this section of the meeting.
I'm Brian Kahn. My address is 1512 Silver Creek, Stillwater. Let me begin by addressing yard waste disposal. I've seen comments that yard waste disposal should be banned. This is unrealistic unless one lives in an apartment or in a zero-lot line development because yard waste involves more than just grass clippings. I want to know why there has not been more discussion of a yard waste composting facility. Midwest City, which is about the size of Stillwater, has a composting facility that accepts yard waste. So does Norman. I use the Convenience Collection Center, and I appreciate having a place to dispose of reasonable quantities of yard waste for free, but I do not understand why it goes to a landfill. A composting facility and the proposed OSU gasifier would provide two ways to divert yard waste from the landfill while creating useful in-demand outputs. We should be able to move forward here. Now, I've lived in Stillwater since 1982, and over time, I've seen waste disposal costs continue to increase while services decrease. I'm grateful to the task force for their efforts, but their main recommendation amounts to growing the city government while increasing fees to citizens. We need to step back and think broadly. First, we should ask to what extent the city should be involved in waste management. Some other cities have lists of licensed residential haulers that citizens can contract with for waste collection. Second, regardless of how waste is collected, recycling only works if there is a viable end product. The list of potentially recyclable items has decreased due to global factors. What is the point of building a new staging facility if most of the inputs are going to end up in a landfill? Third, why does the city need to spend money on new land for this proposed facility? Is there not a suitable existing parcel? And finally, instead of burdening citizens with restricted pickup volumes and nickel-and-dine charges for disposal of quote-unquote "excess" items, why not incentivize students, or citizens who use the Convenience Collection Center? City utility bills already include electronic codes. Scan those codes when a citizen uses the Convenience Collection Center, and develop a formula for a rebate on their next utility bill. Fund this by ending curbside glass recycling and reducing curbside yard waste collection to twice a month. Doing so would have the added benefit of extending pavement life. Remember, at the Transportation Town Hall, it was stated that trash collection vehicles were a major source of wear on residential streets. As we consider waste management options, we need to remember that almost one in three of our citizens lives in poverty. Would it not be preferable to give those citizens an opportunity to save money through responsible waste disposal rather than imposing a fee increase that could mean one less meal for an already hungry child in our city?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate those comments. Brian Langford Loftus.
I just wanted to speak briefly today on an item that's actually on the agenda, but I've learned technically that it's not for public comment per se, so I signed up. Anyway, Brian Langford Loftus, 1009 East Crayler Avenue here in town. I just wanted to share a couple of remarks about what we're going to hear later this evening from the Ready for 100 group and Robin Cornwell. I had an opportunity to meet Robin recently, and in fact, she presented to the Chamber of Government Affairs Committee on Tuesday this month on some of the items she'll be discussing today. Of course, I'm speaking for myself this evening. I'm eager to hear more about what she's got in the works along with the other individuals with Ready for 100. I think it represents a great opportunity for our city to be even more competitive to industry who values going green, let's say. It was kind of a coincidence when she spoke to this Chamber of Government Affairs that that morning on NPR, I heard a story about more and more large industry embracing electric vehicles for their fleet. The irony being that there weren't very many electric vehicles for use in fleet. However, that's the kind of market pressure that makes these kinds of things possible. And I think as we embrace this kind of thinking in our planning for the future and for our city, we'll be better equipped as the change comes from the top down. So I'm eager to hear more about what Robin will be presenting today and encourage the council to view it favorably. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Roger Goss.
Roger Goss, 1120 East Cornell. Sort of on the recycling stuff, which you're going to get into later, and I haven't been able to track all of that. What I have picked up, that one of the discussions is about a $3.50 or some amount of money increase in trash rates, and that's been stated in some of the social media that's insignificant. Thirty-five percent of our population lives below the poverty line. The average household income in Stillwater is $31,800. I'm on the Housing Authority. We have 656 Section 8 vouchers. Means it's people that qualify for that low-income housing subsidy. There's 656 vouchers, and those households can be anywhere from two to four people. So it's quite a few people there. We have 57, no, I'm sorry, 59 public assistant, public housing assistants, and those are the scattered sites that we have other than Roxy Webber. Everybody in Roxy Webber, they're in a joint trash bin, so they're not, they wouldn't be subject to this kind of increase. So that's 715 families that are eligible for housing assistance in this town. That means, I believe, $3.50 a month would be a significant amount to their paycheck. Housing Authority also does, there's a utility allowance. So every year, we have to go through what the utility costs are, what the city sets them at, and we, there's granted a utility allowance. The utility allowance to everybody in the program right now is $15 a month for solid waste, for sanitation. And they get a utility allowance, and that, take that off their income, and that determines what they can get assistance with for rent. I just wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Joyce Taylor.
My name is Joyce Taylor, and I live at 1512 Surrey Drive. And I wanted to speak also about the recycling proposal that's going to be made. First of all, I think many of us were residents of Stillwater when we began this recycling endeavor, and recall that it was proposed that we would save on our utility bills with this endeavor. And so the increase in fees that I'm hearing about is a little bit concerning. I have a small cart because I live alone, and the $3.50 increase would in fact be a 25% increase in my waste disposal fees for this particular, if this is in fact the fee that's being proposed. The cost of living allowance for Social Security for 2020 was only 1.6%, so I think that's a little daunting. I was a little surprised by that amount. I see as a solution, a possibility to allow some of us to opt out of this recycling option. As a child of parents who survived the Great Depression and the Dust Bowl, I've learned to reuse a lot of things. I tend to buy low residue packaged items, and so I find I reuse a lot more than I recycle. And I would just like to propose that there might be an option for us to opt out, for those of us who find that we don't recycle as much as others. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, that's everyone I had signed up under that portion. We appreciate all those comments and for you being here. At this time, we'll move down to item five on the docket. This is consent, general orders. This would be item 5A, a presentation by the Ready for 100 Committee by Robin Cornwell.
Do you need my name and address?
Go ahead.
No, okay. Let me see if I can find the... I don't see a way to maximize that on the screen, so I'm just going to leave it like that. My name is Robin Cornwell. I am the current chair of the Stillwater Public Library Board. I have a background in public policy, and I've been working with the local RF 100 group, that's Ready for 100 group, since last April. There are a number of Ready for 100 supporters here tonight. I'd just like to ask that they raise their hands so you can see who they are and thank them for coming. So, planning for renewable energy is Stillwater Ready for 100. Science tells us the climate is changing. Preparing now will make our community more resilient to the problems that we face. Just a little bit of history about how our group came about. After the announcement to withdraw the U.S. from the Paris Climate Agreement, some cities, states, and businesses pledged to take action. RF 100 is a national movement working to inspire our leaders to embrace a vision of healthier communities powered with 100% clean renewable energy. Currently, there are more than, and this number has been updated, there are more than 150 U.S. cities and towns, 10 counties, and seven states that have made a commitment to 100% renewable energy. And many more are setting their own goals to cut carbon and establish climate action objectives. And those numbers are according to the Sierra Club. So what's happening in Oklahoma? The Norman City Council adopted an RF 100 resolution in May 2018 calling for 100% renewable electricity by 2035 and in all energy use sectors by 2050. And that inspired Stillwater residents Carol Preston and Deanna Homer to take action. The Stillwater effort began through the League of Women Voters in the fall of 2018. Monthly meetings started in January 2019. Supporters of the Stillwater RF 100 effort include League of Women Voters members, Sierra Club members, OSU students and staff, and other interested residents. And Stillwater RF 100 currently has 43 people on our email list. What other cities are doing this? This is just a few of many across the country. I have more information about what each of these communities is doing, and we can look at that later if we wish. Just a few facts. The city of San Antonio, Texas pledged to uphold the Paris Climate Agreement in 2017. And in 2019, the state of New Mexico committed to 100% carbon-free electricity by 2045 for the whole state. Why take action in Stillwater? Well, at a basic level, the city is responsible for the welfare of its residents. According to Stillwater's city charter, and I'm paraphrasing here, "The city of Stillwater has the power for the protection of health and life and for the promotion of the common Also, the city of Stillwater's strategic plan, Priority Four, says, "To develop a strong sense of place that recognizes the interconnectedness of people, buildings, and public systems, such as transportation, utilities, and parks, that best serve the needs of the public." Also, we believe having a meaningful renewable energy plan would make Stillwater attractive to new businesses and new residents as well. It adds to Stillwater's appeal if the Chamber of Commerce can show businesses that we have a sustainable energy plan. Climate risk equals investment risk. Increasingly, the insurance industry and financial asset managers recognize the risks associated with climate change and are taking action accordingly. Major insurers and reinsurers, Allianz and Swiss Re, have made statements to that effect recently. Just a few weeks ago, BlackRock chief executive Larry Fink announced that his firm would make investment decisions with environmental sustainability as a core investment goal. Even the Department of Defense is taking action to protect military bases from extreme Stillwater RF 100 activities. The Stillwater RF 100 group was recognized as a city task force at the GRDA City Council Study Session on Renewable Energy last September. However, it hasn't been formalized as to who's on the task force and what its mission and goals are. And I'll mention this again in a later slide. In November of 2019, we sent a draft Stillwater Ready for 100 resolution to the city manager calling for a commitment to transition the city to 100% renewable energy. We recognize, well, getting to 100% renewable energy is a noble aim, but we recognize the importance of having a goal that is realistic and achievable for Stillwater. And that brings us to today, and we're very grateful to have the opportunity to talk to you all about this important issue. What are our goals? We want to work with the city council, city staff, the business community, and citizens' groups to make a meaningful plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, especially through making a successful transition to carbon-free energy. We would like to set and achieve energy targets that are realistic for our Stillwater community. And we want to respect the natural environment, quality of life, and economic prosperity. I want to stress that we wish to encourage energy goals that are realistic, pragmatic, and make sense for the local economy. In my, in my own research and reading, it looks like these, the communities with the most successful programs have these three things in common. They have cooperation and support between city staff, elected officials, experts, business and community groups. They have taken time to study and research the unique circumstances in the community before making any commitment to a specific greenhouse gas or renewable energy target, and they take action across sectors. And what does that mean? It means taking action not just in energy supply, but in buildings, specifically building efficiency, in transportation, in waste management, water, wastewater, economic development, tree planting, sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera. We respectfully request the city council consider the following action items. We ask that the city council resolve to support the study and development of a renewable energy action plan. We seek assistance to formalize the membership on the renewable energy task force, including representatives from city council and city staff. In other words, we would like the city to invite people to apply to serve on the task force. And to improve the chances of success, we ask that the task force include one city council member and at least one city staff member. Then, after a designated time for study, we hope the city council will adopt an energy action plan calling for specific renewable energy and/or greenhouse gas emissions targets. So those are our action items. Thank you so much for your attention. And I do have more details about what the other communities I listed are doing, if you would like to see that, or I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cornwell. Appreciate it. Counselors, questions?
There are a lot of questions, but in order to actually move along in your goals, I think that, I mean, we don't have to make a decision right this minute, but I do like the way you presented the idea that, you know, the successful communities do the study and then come up with the realistic, pragmatic plan. I really appreciate that presentation a lot.
Thank you.
And I think that's not a difficult thing for me to be positive about.
I just have a couple of specifics that I wanted to ask about.
Okay.
Just in your discussion, you talk about, when you refer to clean renewable energy or carbon-free energy, what is, describe for me a little bit more about what you all mean when you say that.
Basically, renewable energy is energy that doesn't rely on fossil fuels. I know a couple of times in the presentation, I've referred to carbon-free energy, and that's a little more inclusive. It can include energy from nuclear power.
Okay.
Which a lot of people see as a necessary bridge to achieving renewable energy goals.
And then, I'm just, there's a draft resolution in here that we'll talk about in a little bit, but I just wanted to ask again some of the specifics. When we talk about renewable energy in all sectors by 2050, including heating and transportation, that's a commitment by the city itself to not use carbon-based energy in its heating? Or are you referring to an idea that the city, citywide, we would be?
Citywide.
Okay. So...
We would hope that that would be achievable citywide.
Like, existing natural gas heating in homes would be phased out by then?
That's...
That's the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just trying to get a sense of what we're talking about here.
Yes.
Counselors, any other questions?
I also appreciate the idea of doing some study to kind of figure out what is feasible and pragmatic for us here in Stillwater. I think understanding best practices from other communities, as you stated, you've done some of that work already, but understanding how communities have tackled this issue in the past. I know, back, it's probably been, what, maybe 10 years ago or so, they were doing, there were some grants even out there for energy efficiency and sustainability for communities. A lot of cities that I worked with were establishing sustainability officers and sustainability programs. They were doing efficiency and energy audits for city-run properties. And to me, all of that made a lot of sense from the environment side, but also from an economic side and understanding how we can be more energy efficient.
Yes.
And I think all of that kind of ties together, and it can start to make a lot of sense from a city budget and things like that. So I would, I would hope that maybe there's an opportunity to build off of some of that work or establish some similar type study here in Stillwater.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, I think there are some planning tools that Stillwater might use to work towards sustainability. I know there are some tools out there. You may know more than I do. You probably do.
We can talk about that.
Yeah.
Well, I want to just, by way of your presentation, thank you and the entire group that you've been working with on this effort so far. I mean, I think this is a fantastic example of a group of community citizens who feel strongly about an issue and feel compelled to bring it up and to work on it, to actually do that work, to bring it to us and to engage in these conversations is the only way things really happen. And so we certainly appreciate so far the work that you've all done and the commitment you've put into this. And, you know, I think it's clear, we'll certainly continue to discuss this this evening, and then talk more with your group as we go forward as well.
Great. It's been my pleasure to work on this, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for being here. That takes us down to item 5B. This is the Citizens Recycling Task Force Recommendation on the City of Stillwater Recycling Program. And we'll have a number of presenters, I think, or a number of folks to talk, but we'll start with Chris Knight, our Waste Management Director.
Good evening, Chris Knight, Waste Management Director. On October 7th, the council approved 32 applications from citizens to form a recycling task force. One more application was approved at a later date. The recycling task force was asked to review the city's recycling program and determine the direction the city should go once the city's current contract is up in June of 2022. The recycling task force has prepared a presentation for the council tonight. There are three other recycling task force members are here to present, Anthony Briggs, Tim Harden, and Frank Bloom, and I will turn it over to Anthony.
Good evening, Mayor Joyce, city council members. My name is Anthony Briggs. I was a member of the Citizen Task Force on Recycling. Sorry. Good evening, city council members, Mayor Joyce. My name is Anthony Briggs. I was a member of the Citizen Task Force on Recycling, and I'd like to start with our agenda for tonight. Well, actually, I'm a long-term resident of Stillwater, and so I'd like to see some really good changes. really good changes here that would help our community. Our agenda for this evening, for the presentation, is we'll do the acknowledgements of the task force members, and then the need for the recommendation, the summary of the process. It's not moving. Oh, there we go. The summary of the process and the task force key recommendations. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge the task force members, those that are here. If you would please stand when I call your name. Gladine Allred, Mayberry Baldwin, Kristen Ball, Art Berry, Frank Blum, Anthony Briggs, Belinda Bruner, Joshua Butcher, Ken Klinkenbeard, Damian Davies. I am so sorry. There we go. I'm really nervous. Damian Davis, Kira Frisbee, Riley Flack, Madeline Fong Goddard, Tim Harden, Elda Hershey, Tom Houston, Alicia Johnson, Pat Kennedy, Joyce Conneymocker, Dan Lawrence, Diane Maddox, Steve Mason, Carolyn Moore, Terrence Murphy, Jack Nasworthy, Mike Shanahan, James Sines, Gordon Sloggett, Ryan Smith, Aaron Underwood, Brian Whitaker, Alexa Wiles, and John Wood. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Tim Harden, and he will be talking about the need for the recommendation. Thank you.
Before we move past that, thank you all for your participation and effort in this endeavor.
So, Tim Harden, I live at 2316 South Silverdale. So the need for a recommendation, why are we here? And the bottom line is, come June of 2022, our contract with the current recycling provider will expire. And if we do nothing, there will be no more recycling in the City of Stillwater. So that's the basics. And a little bit of background, recycling is not quite so easy. It's not just take stuff and find someplace to put it. I'll give you a couple of examples as we go through. So the process, we had nine meetings beginning in November, nine long meetings beginning in November through February 4th. And what we did was we looked at the concept of recycling from the concepts of people, profit, and planet. And we tried to look at the financial, environmental, and social issues. The financial is relatively easy to quantify. The environmental issues are not quite so easy to quantify. And the social issues, I guess, are even less easy to quantify. So we started off with a flash vote, and we had 936, I believe, response, 936 or 963, pardon me for one of the two. And that was, we developed the questionnaire, it was published, it was conducted in mid-December, and the results were shared with our task force. And if you'll notice, here's our results. Fifty-six percent of the respondents felt that recycling was extremely important. About 1% was not sure. And about 5%, well, less than 5%, were not at all important. So the concept here is about 95% of the respondents felt there was some importance to recycling. Our diversion rate, right now, about 15% of the total tonnage that's collected is going towards recycling. And the 85% there is what's disposed of, the 10% white is the recycling rate, and the 5% dark number is the yard waste. So where did the tons come from? We've got this, in 2018, we generated 24, excuse me, 24,242 tons of trash generated and collected. Forty-eight, 41% was residential, 58% was commercial and roll-offs. Of the 41% residential, 65% was from, sorry, percent recycling tons, 65% is from recycling, from the yellowtop containers that we have. 12% is from the drop-off, and 23%, which is not on there, is commercial. So let's talk about the process. I'm an engineer, I love grass. So we start off with generation. So we all generate trash. We all generate stuff that has to be disposed of or recycled one way or another. Once that's generated, it has to be collected. Once it's collected, a certain large percentage of it is disposed of. Some is sent for recycling and for processing. Some of that amount that was sent for processing is also disposed of because it's not really recyclable. And then once it's been recycled and sorted, then it's sent off to marketing to try to find a place to sell it. So this is just not the cleanest thing. Recycling is not the cleanest picture in the world here. Imagine cardboard, okay? I'm sure most of you have gotten cardboard boxes from a little company called Amazon. Okay, so we cut those cardboard boxes up, put them in the recycling container, they get picked up, they get sent to a processor. Processor then sends them on to usually a paper mill. And we're fortunate here in Oklahoma, there's a lot of places in southeast Oklahoma and Arkansas that are paper mills that will recycle. And then that gets made back into paper, gets made back into cardboard, and becomes an Amazon container yet again, so the cycle repeats. Cardboard is one of those items that is not infinitely recyclable. Fiber, wood fiber is what it is. And every time wood fiber is recycled, the fiber gets a little less strong, a little shorter, and eventually cannot be recycled into high-quality product. You can take, on the other example, aluminum. Aluminum is infinitely recyclable. You have a pound of aluminum, it's melted down, it can be made back into cans, and it's perfectly usable. The content or the composition of aluminum does not change every time it's recycled. Likewise, glass doesn't really change, but glass is an issue that we will talk about another time. So the process, the process not of recycling, the process of our committee. We had several guest speakers. One came from the landfill here in town, one from a MRF. And I will say that a MRF is not a little blue guy. It's a municipal material recycling facility, a recovery facility. And we had a discussion with the OSU people about the gasifier, which I understand was approved by city council here recently, was in the paper. That's a side issue to us, and several of us visited our current processing facility here in Stillwater. So before we go on, I'm an engineer. We tend to think of problem solving. Let's identify the problem. So the problem is, we got to do something. And then we identify alternatives. Then we evaluate alternatives. Then we select alternatives. And then, that's where we are right now, selecting and recommending, and then eventually implement, follow up, and adjust. So we followed that process pretty well. So we started off with 22 options on the generation cycle. And of those 22 options, we looked at nine that would be feasible to implement that were recommended for implementation. There were four options that were longer term, that may take extra time. At least they justified further investigation. Look at the collection of recyclables. We had five options that were discussed. Three were recommended for implementation. The processing and transfer of recyclables, we had seven options that were discussed. One recommended for implementation, and two to be considered for longer-term investigation. And yard waste, six options were discussed. One was recommended for implementation, and two to be considered for longer-term investigation. And finally, for commercial recycling, two options were discussed, and one recommended for implementation. And I said finally, I think we're finally. Disposal, two options discussed, and one recommended for implementation. And the end markets, this is really kind of the issue with recycling that we're faced with today. What do you do with the recycled materials? I mentioned cardboard already, that's one option. Plastics can be recycled, but in our world today, we're living in a global market, plastics are no longer being accepted by China. Well, Oklahoma's never sold a piece of plastic to China because it's too far from us. To get plastic to China, we'd have to either ship it to Houston through the Panama Canal or railroad somehow to California to be hauled to China. I don't think that's ever been done, but as the China market shut down, it's backed up here in the US and eventually affecting us here in Stillwater. Other end markets to talk about, I'll mention glass. Glass is a very heavy material. The primary product, the primary raw material for glass is sand, which is not the most expensive material in the world. And there is a need for some broken glass to go back into a batch to make a new batch of glass. But glass is very heavy, very expensive to haul. We don't have any good local places to use it. And glass, by the way, is very inert. If we bury glass in landfill, it does not decompose, it does not create any sort of hazard whatsoever. It's just there. So we looked at end markets, we had three options to be discussed, one recommended for implementation, and one has a longer-term investigation. And for the specific recommendations, I'm going to pass the podium over to my colleague, Frank Bloom.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of council, thank you for the opportunity to be here to present this work. Let me just say a couple general things. Recycling reduces pollution and the associated landfill impacts of used materials. Recycling reduces the energy cost and the greenhouse gases embedded into new materials. A major impact of recycling is reducing carbon dioxide. Carbon dioxide is a very potent greenhouse gas, which has significant impact on climate change. The finances of recycling are in a state of flux. The watchwords for overall good stewardship of materials are reduce, reuse, and recycle. The task force wanted to let you know that the recommendations that the task force made were all done as majority votes by the committee. In fact, ultimately, the last vote was to support the whole package, was 13 to 3. So a pretty big majority was in favor of doing this. So, generation. Generation is the generation of materials. We have recommendations on generation. They are to revise the multimedia and the website and other outreach materials so that we can promote source reduction. We can increase participation in the recycling program, and we can decrease contamination in our waste stream. Decreasing the contamination in our waste stream is probably the lowest-hanging fruit. When materials get sent to our processor, on a time-to-time basis, the waste stream is evaluated for stuff that can be recycled and stuff that can't. And what can be recycled here is different than in Boston, and in Houston, and in Los Angeles. There's a geographical issue, there's a size issue. But if our waste stream has a certain level of contaminants, it costs us more to recycle that material. So the contamination can be reduced if we educate people about what goes in there and what doesn't. And I think we can do a pretty good job of that in the future, in my opinion. So, there are some other recommendations. Now, some of our recommendations are actually to do things that are concrete. Some others are just to investigate, because things change, and they're a little bit down the road. We want to keep our eye, as a city, on some of those targets. So what we want to do is to charge for grocery bags. Now, I'll just warn you about this. Later on, the slides say tax grocery bags, or tax bags. We don't mean that. That was a typo that didn't get corrected. But we want to investigate the possibility of charging for bags, so that ultimately people can use bags that are reusable and reduce the bags. Now, bags are a couple problems. A, seem blown all over, stuck on fences, it's a pollution problem. But in addition to that, bags create lots of problems for recycling. They get stuck in the gears and the rollers and bags are, people shudder when they see bags, and they basically have to pull them out by hand. So that's a big, it's a big problem. So we'd like to limit how many single-use bags that we have. So reusable sacks are preferred. There are incentive programs that we could look into, or buybacks, we can target education. And one of the things we need to do is partner and work with college students, because they're sort of a little more transient in the community. They live in places where there's high density of population, and sometimes the word doesn't get out about what goes in there and what doesn't. So we really need to engage them a little more. In areas where college students live, quite frankly, there's more, there's a higher level of contamination in the waste, in the trash streams. Okay, so, and then we also need to advocate for legislative action. There is a role for government in this kind of thing. States where there's a deposit on bottles generally have over 90% of those plastic bottles returned. States that don't, typically less than 30%. So there's a role that government can have. Second thing is collection. So how should we collect it? Well, first thing is that we need to continue to collect single-stream recyclables. Single-stream recyclables mean you get one cart, and you put all the recyclables, the key is recyclables, not the non-recyclables, into the cart. And then we collect that curbside on a weekly basis. We recommend that we continue, that we reinstitute the two-strike rule. Now, what's the two-strike rule? There is a person, or persons, who go around and occasionally audit carts. They look to see what's in the cart, and then they see if there's too much stuff, if it beats the threshold of, there's too much stuff in there. We're not talking about the occasional wrong thing, the pizza box with a little bit of grease on it, if that happens once in a while. But if there's too much non-recyclable material in the carts, then they get flagged, they get a note on there. And then, a little later, there might be a follow-up audit. And if that follow-up audit also meets that threshold of, we don't want this cart, then that's two strikes. The city takes their, the city would take their cart away. And they might have to, quote, earn it, unquote, back to ensure that they can, that they can kind of, you know, keep our waste stream clean. And the third thing is to continue at the Convenience Collection Center, that's the one on Perkins Road. Every time I'm there, there seem to be lots of people there. I think it works really well, and so did pretty much everybody on the task force. Okay, next thing is processing and transfer. So we recommend that we construct a recycle staging facility with a Convenience Collection Center. This would be, in order to incorporate both of these functions and the potential for additional functions in the future, it would have to be big enough to handle everything that we would like to do in the future, including the possibility that we could have a transfer station for trash and recycling, and also a city-earned MRF. And a MRF is a materials reclamation facility or a materials recycling facility, you'll hear both of those used. The transfer station is a possibility as a midterm goal, and the MRF is a long-term goal. Also, as I'll talk about later, it may be that a MRF that is sort of a regional MRF may make a lot more sense than just something that Stillwater does independently. There are scalabilities that we need to take advantage of. So what about yard waste and other organics? We believe that the city should continue to collect yard waste and other organics, and use our current processor to process these materials. There's another issue out there. Now, this is a recommendation to investigate food waste. Food waste is kind of an awkward, complicated problem. Many communities, not the majority, but many communities recycle and reuse food waste. My kids do that in Denver. They get mad at me if I put the wrong stuff in the wrong bin. I understand completely now. But, so, food scraps can be reused, but it's not a simple problem to solve. Maybe it could be mixed with sludge, maybe we hire somebody, put out a Maybe it could be mixed with sludge, maybe we hire somebody, put out an RFP for them. It's something that we should keep our eye on, though, because getting that out of the landfill is probably desirable. Okay? Then we have commercial recycling. So what can we do there? Well, we need to do more to promote recycling with commercial entities. This is especially, there's an special opportunity because of all the cardboard, cardboard that's used. If you can get good, clean cardboard, like from things that get shipped, that's got a decent recycle value. So the more of that we can get, the better off we are. But, the committee did not want to mandate recycling for the commercial sector. Then, of course, some of it goes into disposal. And with respect to disposal, the committee recommended that we continue the use of the current landfill. There seem to be ample pods in the landfill and didn't seem to be a problem to do that. So we plan to, we recommend that we continue to do this. And then there's the end market. What eventually happens to this? Obviously, you put all these polyethylene, terephthalate, by the way, I'm a chemist, PET bottles, they're polyester. Same thing as fleece is made out of, or most carpets are now polyester. So they're all different forms of the same polymer, plastic, if you will. But this material then goes to somebody who is an end user and would take this material and sell it to someone, maybe like Procter &amp; Gamble, who's, who's got targets for the reuse of plastics for their containers, for Tide and other materials. Our recommendation is that we continue to lead it, leave it to the processor to market the recyclables. We don't necessarily think the city should get into the marketing game, just have them take the whole thing and do that. And then investigate the viability of long-term cooperation, maybe to attract end marketers to the region. Okay, now let's talk about timing a little bit. So we've got short-term, next couple of years, midterm, five, maybe ten years, I don't know if I get the exact brackets on the date right, but long-term, maybe up to twenty years from now. So in terms of generation, short-term, we can do a lot with education. We can do some reduction and we can encourage participation. Long and medium-term, we could continue to look for charge, oh. Where did, we changed the slides, okay. I was told we couldn't change the slides. We changed it, there's no tax anymore. No tax anymore. We're going to continue, we're going to, you know, we're going to look into the viability of charging for grocery bags. We can't do this right away. We can do incentives. We can target, you know, trying to work with college students and state legislature. For collection, all across this timeframe, still continue single-stream, still continue weekly pickup on the curbside, two-strike rule, and continue the convenience center. So, recommendations on timing for processing and transfer. Short-term, we build our own recycling staging center. Recycling comes in, you dump it, you bail it up, and you ship it off. The city needs to purchase land that allows us to grow into some things the city might wish to get into in a future date. So midterm, it could include a transfer station. And then, long-term, it might continue a materials recycling facility. Timing on yard waste, we'll just continue to collect the yard waste as we do now and it'll be handled by the current processor. And the food scraps, we'll just try, we should just keep our eye on it. We don't know what to do now, but five years from now, fifteen years from now, it may be completely obvious and we need to be prepared for it, to, to follow it from time to time to do it. Okay. So, recommendation on commercial recycling, we just continue to promote recycling for all time and, but not mandate it. Disposal for the whole range, use the current landfill for end markets, leave it to the processor. But in the end, we might consider doing something very, you know, rather long-term to try to bring in people to help us market this. So, cost, obviously, is important. For doing the educational materials and things like that, there's basically no cost. Continuing, oh, here's one, still plastic, we're not going to tax plastic bags, so that one didn't get corrected. So we continue to look at the viability of that and continue to look at incentive programs, continue to target education for college students and advocate for legislative action. It's hard to know exactly how these would all work out in terms of cost because there could be incentives by the city, there could be tax breaks, there could be none. So we just really couldn't evaluate that now. To continue collection at curbside for a single-stream, no change, it pretty much costs what we're doing now. Yeah, maybe there's inflation, but, you know, for practical purposes, it's not a large cost increase, so essentially it falls under no cost. The reinstate the two-strikes rules is interesting because if we're going to be serious about it, and serious about reducing the contamination of the waste stream, what we need to do is we need to audit more of the carts. And then send them a note, put a note on the cart that they're not going to, you know, that they, they need to clean up the carts. Now, that'll cost more money to have another person or more time dedicated to that endeavor. However, if we clean up the waste stream enough, we can make more of that money back on not having the discounts to the waste stream because our contamination hits a certain level. I'm an optimist. I believe that we can convince the majority of people to put the right stuff and pretty much only the right stuff in the carts. And we're not talking about a percent or two, but we're talking on the order of getting below twenty percent because people just put stuff in there, primarily because they really don't know. I believe that they want to do the right thing, they just don't know. This is a plastic, it's got a number on the back, throw it in there. And that doesn't work. Okay. And lastly, continue with the convenience center and that's basically just the operation of the convenience center, is no additional cost. Now, a processing and transfer station. It is estimated that that will cost about $572,000 annually to construct and operate. Now, Chris is going to talk about that because some of the cost that's in that $572,000 is already allocated to doing some of those jobs as we're doing it now. So it's a little more complicated, but this is an annual cost that it would cost, but some of it's already being paid. Similarly, in the midterm, if the city purchases a recycling staging facility that's big enough to include a transfer station, that'd be $1.4 million annually, but some of those costs are also currently being paid. And lastly, the potential for a materials recycling facility. There I, there are economies of scale on recently, regionally-owned ones that cooperate with other communities. So for example, just as an example, if we were to process in a MRF, 2,000 tons per year of recyclables, that's about where we are now, that cost could be as much as $900 per ton. But if that was increased to, say, 5,000 tons by having four other communities bring in close to 1,000 tons each a year, they'd have to be local because transportation cost is important in this, then we could probably bring that cost down to about a third of that, to about 300 tons. So their economy's of scale. Bigger the, bigger the thing is, the more people who use it, the lower the costs are going to be. Finally, or almost finally, sorry for taking a while, but yard waste. To continue to collect yard waste, no change in cost. To do the food scraps, who knows? But it certainly needs to be looked into. And some other recommendations on the commercial recyclings, not much change in cost. Continue to use the current landfills, probably not much cost. If they had to open a new pod, that would cost more. But as far as I understand, they don't need to open a new pod for that, so that's okay. And the end marketers are going to be the people who get the stuff so we don't have to worry about paying for any of that. And lastly, who knows how much it's going to be to do this regional cooperation and so forth. So, what I'd like to do is, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to involve citizens in this process. I think it's the hallmark of a progressive community to consider doing this and I think I speak for all the task force members that we were happy to be involved in this process and, and thank you for it. And again, I would just like to state that these were all majority recommendations by the task force. And so, we can answer questions, the task force can answer some questions, but before we do that, we would like Chris Knight to come up and explain a few more of the nuances with respect to costing out some of those larger costs that I, cost that I discussed. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to clarify a number before we open it up for questions. Can I get that PowerPoint back up there? After we sent out the PowerPoint and the packet, we identified that there's some duplicate cost in that $572,000 number there. Our current processing fees to our current processor was in there and the operational cost of the collection center is in that. So really, that number should be $390,000 instead of 572. That would be the additional annual cost, 390. Then also in your packet, you might have saw that there was a $3.50 per household number. It should be $2.50.
That, 250 covers that 390, is that what you're, if there's 390 in additional yearly cost for that facility, that would mean $2.50.
The 250, we caught, yeah, cover the whole operation of the additional cost of the recycling.
That's 250 per household per year?
Per household, per month.
Per month, okay.
Thirty dollars a year.
Yeah, okay.
And Chris, just to clarify, that number also includes transfer, transportation.
That 390 includes the construction of the staging facility that's being recommended, the operation of the staging facility, the transfer of the material to Tulsa or Oklahoma City, wherever we go, and the processing fees that we would, we would pay for the recycling material.
Can you, can you clarify for me, what is the difference between the recycling staging facility, a transfer station, and a MRF?
A MRF is, is a high-tech system that you would take your recycling, where you'd have a lot of equipment in there, conveyor belts, you know, some really high-tech equipment. A transfer station is a facility that you could put recycling in, however, you can also put trash. So it's a little bit more sophisticated, there's a lot of permits you would have to acquire for a transfer station. You can't just put a transfer station anywhere you want, you know, you'd have to get approval through DEQ and the permits. The staging facility, basically, it is just an enclosed building with a concrete floor that we would dump our recyclings in on the floor and then load those recyclables up into a, a larger trailer, semi-truck trailer, or contracted out, whichever way we went. And then it would haul it to the MRF.
To the existing MRF in Oklahoma City or Tulsa?
Whichever way, yeah, we'd have to.
So the difference between that and what we're doing now is, what we're doing now is where our recycling trucks are taking this out to the existing processing facility and dumping it there.
Correct.
And then they take it and do whatever they do with it to send it to the MRF.
Correct. Our current processor, he is, his facility's more like a staging facility.
Yeah, okay. So, because all he's doing is basically transferring it to trucks and sending it to a MRF.
Exactly.
So we'd just be doing that ourselves?
We'd be doing it ourselves.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Where does it go now? Tulsa or Oklahoma City? To, what MRF are we using right now?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure, exactly sure where Cedar Creek Farms sells all their recycling.
Once we get to Cedar Creek Farms, we're done.
We're done. We, you know, that's all we do and then they do with it what they do.
So that, I mean, the question here is, I mean, the core question here is, once our contract with Cedar Creek Farms is over, I mean, the option is, what do we do with this recycling? We either stop collecting it or we figure out something else to do with it.
Correct.
Because we don't, we don't anticipate that we'll be able to continue using Cedar Creek Farm for what they're doing, or we prefer not to, or, I mean, that, what, that's not an option or was that an option?
There could be a chance we could still use Cedar Creek Farms. There could be a chance that they won't be available to, except the recycling.
One of the assumptions here is that they might not be, or we would
Correct.
Choose not to use.
And if they are, we'll be paying a higher cost than what we're paying now in our current contract.
Is there an estimation on what that cost might be? If we did continue business, if we renewed that contract, do we have any wherewithal of what that cost increase might look like?
Around the $65 a ton, $70 a ton range.
So what would that look like?
Which would be comparable to the MRF in Tulsa or Oklahoma City?
Yeah, in August, we sent out an RFP because we didn't know what was going to happen with our current processor. So we did receive back through some medals, two from the MRF in, the MRFs in Oklahoma City and one in Tulsa. And the one at Tulsa came back around the $70, $75 range. So it'd be, you know, comparable to the one in Tulsa.
So we'd be looking at having to increase, or looking at potentially increasing a rate, even if we continued with the current processor on a renewed basis?
Yes, sir. And I just want to clarify that, just make sure everyone understands, no one's asking to raise any rates tonight, you know, this wouldn't be potentially until 2022. And we would have to come back before you, before any of that happened.
Sure. I mean, while you're up here, Chris, you might ask for a few random questions?
Sure.
And I'll, I'm gonna, unless you guys have other ones, I'm just gonna start firing some. Well, just from comments we heard a little earlier from some of the folks that spoke at the beginning, did we look at, is composting yard waste a possibility that the committee looked at at all, or is it something we've looked at from a city waste management perspective?
Both. I mean, I've looked, we've looked at it staff before and it was, you know, the task force talked about it too. But once again, there'd be another additional cost to be able to compost because you've got to buy a lot of equipment if you want to do it correctly. City Norman does a great job with composting, they have a great facility, but it's millions of dollars, you know? So that's just another cost that would be added on to this cost.
If we have the staging facility, could you combine, would you normally combine, if you chose to have composting, would that be something that you would operate kind of in that same facility or near that same facility or?
Well, if we decided we wanted to do our own composting, yes, we could use that same site for that operation.
Again, just back to some of the previous comments about opting in and opting out, did the, the committee look at the idea of what if not everybody wanted to participate? How would that work? Is that a, an option that?
It was discussed, you know, fairly heavily, you know, by a subscription-based program. It was, the majority of the group decided they really didn't want to go down that, you know, down that road. They, you know, there was an option that was presented by, by, well, Recyclops, it's a company that comes into your city and does that operation. But the group didn't, in that option, if you wanted to, it included the city doing away, but doing any recycling. So not only just your residential curbside, but closing the recycling center and then no commercial recycling either, even though this company would offer that to the commercial businesses. The biggest thing was closing of the recycling center and no one was willing to do that. Well, the majority wasn't willing to do that.
When you're speaking of, when you're saying recycling center, are you referring to the Convenience Collection Center or what?
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Chris, what was the, what was, tell me about the discussion about commercial recycling. There's a comment about not mandating commercial recycling. Is there a reason we don't include commercial businesses or customers of ours, commercial customers of ours in a recycling program?
As far as mandating them to do it, is that what you're?
Well, I mean, we sort of mandate Well, I mean, we sort of mandate residents to do it, right? I mean, everybody pays recycling as part of their residential waste management bill. Why don't we do that as part of the commercial waste management bill?
To be honest with you, I don't know. We just never have done it.
Okay.
It's always just been their choice. We don't want to participate. But we do have, um, we do have 82 businesses, commercial businesses that do participate and that's all the containers that we have that are provided by Cedar Creek Farms. So we're using all of them that we have.
That's just the, just the cardboard recycling, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. But there's no option currently for businesses in town to have
Like a single stream?
A single stream pickup?
No, no.
And they don't pay, the cardboard doesn't cost a business anything to have that?
No, they just have to have our trash service to.
For the questions, counsel?
That was my question, mayor. Can we put that in the investigate?
Yes, we can.
Please.
Okay, so, so just for sort of summary sake, I mean, it sounds like basically the, from the committee's standpoint, looking at what are we gonna do when our current contract ends? The overall recommendation is to kind of keep the service we have now, construct a facility that allows us to do the transfer ourselves instead of having an outside entity do it and whatever the resulting cost of that is, it just spread out over the existing base of, of customers.
Correct.
I have possibly an intangible question here, but in looking at the big picture of all of this, I think it was presented early on in the presentation that the, one of the big goals of recycling is to reduce CO2 emissions, right? Reduce your carbon footprint, as the term goes. So do we have a wherewithal of what, because right now, we're, we, we gather up our curbside recycling. We take that to our, um, sorting center. That is then hauled off to a city, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Wichita, wherever, in trucks that put out a fair amount of CO2 emission. Versus what the carbon footprint of putting that stuff in a landfill here in Stillwater, do we have any comparison of what that looks like? Because I mean, in my mind, if one of the major goals here is to decrease our carbon footprint, are we actually worsening our carbon footprint by transporting all of this stuff away from Stillwater? You, you probably do not have those numbers and I
I don't.
I would be really impressed if you did, but.
It was discussed in the task force meetings, you know, we, uh, we had a consultant, NewGen Strategies, who we've already been working with on Solway Study, helped facilitate the meetings. And, um, they, it was discussed, but I don't have those numbers in front of me, you know. And I don't know if we had like hard numbers, but it was discussed about the footprint and everything.
Yeah.
They're actually in one of the, I can't recall which meeting it was, but in some of our notes, I think we had where they had pulled out, there was an environmental indices that was used to show the footprint of each of the different options from transport to disposal to, in all of the different phases of, um, recycling. I can share those with you. I don't recall. I, I rec-
I know it was discussed and you're right, there, it was in one of the meetings. I don't have it with me though.
But the upshot of that was that it was a better carbon footprint to recycle it even if we have to drive it an hour out from there?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, one of the things, I think the task force, you guys did a great job of explaining was that they really did look at this issue from a triple bottom line perspective. So we had some people in the task force that were very concerned around the financial, um, impacts, the costs associated with it, some that were very concerned around the environmental impacts associated with it and some that were very concerned, um, around the community aspects of it, you know, whether our community could afford it, whether this was a value in our community to recycle. Um, and all those people kind of came together with, and asked a lot of questions of the, of the consultants. So I think they got a lot of data around that triple bottom line. So they provided those environmental indices, they provided the financial information and there was a lot of discussion. The flash vote kind of helped us give a, give a little bit of flavor to whether, you know, on the, from the community perspective, if this is something that our community valued. So, um, and then they kind of meshed all that together. So in their recommendations, I think it was, the recommendations kind of pulled together the best triple bottom line that they could pull together. Do I say that accurately?
Counselors, anything further for Chris at this point? We have a, another member of the task force that wanted to
Yes, yes, we do. I'll get that ready. And as we get going later, just so you guys know, we do have a member from NewGen Strategies here tonight if you would like any questions about any numbers.
Okay. Mr. Flack, I think you have some alternative dissenting opinions as to some of those issues?
How are y'all doing?
We're good.
This is gonna be my first visit with you guys. I hope it goes well. Yeah, so I'm the dissenter and I'll go through a little bit about why. So first, I kind of used their PowerPoint, um, 'cause they did a great job. And so I stole theirs. First, so why are we here? Current cost, proposed cost, bottom line, and my recommendation, being the dissenter. So kind of went over this. The two reasons why we're here is the market for recycled materials is in freefall. In the last two years, um, what you get from curbside recycling, it, it is, it's gone way, way down as far as value. And then contamination. So last three years' average, the city's averaged 28% contamination with what gets picked up in our bins. I wanted to make a note of the, the makeup of the task force. I happen to be an outlier. As you can imagine, um, the folks that would maybe answer the call for help on recycling, they might be, um, pro-recycling. It's very important to them. Um, and that was part of the reason why I joined the task force, knowing that. Um, I know I'd be, I knew I'd be offering a dissenting opinion and other points of view that, that might be missed. Um, so here's a little wrap up and Chris tried to throw me a curveball here, but I'll give you what I got. Um, the city says it costs 700 grand a year to recycle curbside currently. 4288 per ton at Cedar Creek, that's at the 28% average. It's a sliding scale that Henry will charge, uh, under 20%, which I don't think has been done until maybe this month, I've heard. I don't know. And it's 3084 a ton at the current landfill. So it's, it's cheaper at our, um, contamination rate to landfill economically. So, so my question was, and maybe I can get an answer to this later and I don't expect it now. But so if we have 28% of what we drop off at Henry's is trash, do we, do we then turn around and pay again to landfill it? You know, it, it's something we haven't, I haven't heard in the task force. It wasn't discussed and I didn't think to bring it up. But that would make it more expensive to throw the trash away by a lot. So, um, so obviously contamination being the problem there. The national average contamination for curbside recycling via waste management is the largest in the, in the country. They average 25%. If we spend money to educate and decrease contamination, I think we need to be realistic about the potential results. With a national average of 25%, you know, I don't know how much room there is in, to, to improve. Uh, if we spend money to edu-, or pardon me, um, subscription model, as I see it, is an immediate, is a way to immediately affect and decrease contamination. Um, folks would have skin directly in the game, um, as, as they are choosing to pay to recycle. So it just speaks to common sense to me that the folks that would opt in and charge and will, be willing to pay the, the monthly charge, that they would be, um, better rule followers of the game, if you will. I don't know if you guys and gals have been 20 years old before and in college. I'm not sure how good, you know, anyway. So
From what I remember.
Yeah.
Recycling wasn't invented.
You had reuse though, reuse. Um, 81% increase is the proposed cost increase. That's changed now. It's still a high, it's still a big increase, uh, if you ask me. Um, that would be $8 a month for all households at 1.72 million. That's what it would work out. And that's working with, I think, 13,500 households. I think Chris gave me a different number of 14,000 that they actually service, but something like that. And that's not including the cost of the 10 acres of land that we've been, that the majority has recommended buying. So the increase, um, needed was calculated by NewGen. Therefore, I think the city affirms their data as accurate, is what I would state. 10 acres are for, as they said, um, future transfer station or MRF and the cost of that, as you saw, is, um, pretty substantial, 1.5 million. And so, um, it was mentioned, Recyclops. I'd never heard of them. Um, I didn't really know necessarily what I thought. I went into the task force thinking that landfill was the best option. I don't have a, a whole lot of concern about the viability of the future of our planet based on recycling. I just, I, I, I've seen a lot of eco-disaster predictions come and go over the last 50 years and so I'm not necessarily too awfully worried. The Recyclops, it's currently operating in Bartlesville and I think it was two or three weeks ago maybe that they've been utilizing them. Um, I, I spoke to Ward Two Councilman Paul Stewart, I think is his name, and he seemed pretty excited, um, for the opportunity. They needed like 200 or 300 people to, to commit in order for Recyclops to come in. Um, it's $10 a month, 15 with, with glass included. Um, I, I did note here mounting evidence that recycling glass actually hurts the environment. Uh, we had one of your previous presenters here, um, mention that. And so I think, you know, I don't know how many totes we have out there recycling glass, but it's sand. It's sand and heat. We got a lot of sand in the world. I don't know why we're hauling it around emitting emissions to do that. NewGen advised, um, if subscription model was implemented, participation rate would drop or would be 15 to 20%. So, um, uh, they've seen in, 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 I don't know how many cities, their, their data showed in a PowerPoint that's next here. This was the actual slide that we got, 15 to 20%. And it was presented as, um, we shouldn't do this because it's gonna be more expensive per household. And I was a little bit awestruck that that was presented in that way. If that was the case and those numbers are right, um, it would seem to me that it would matter which side of the fence you were on, whether it was more expensive or not. So 80 to 85% of folks might raise their hand and say, wait a second, it's not more expensive for me. Does that make sense? So I, I got kind of stuck there and had to, and that's when, after that, that's when Recyclops, um, was mentioned. Um, flash vote results, I wanted to note that it's 1.3% of Stillwater. They claim it's a scientific poll. We could argue that, um, it's unnecessary. I just wanted to point to, um, it's 1.3% of the population. The next slide here. I don't know why they didn't choose any other questions to mention as part of their presentation, but question two, um, kind of points to some of maybe the, the inaccuracy of this poll. Uh, so Q2 was how many use curbside week, weekly for recycling? Um, we have hard data, if Chris Knight can correct me if I'm wrong, 63% do that weekly. Um, that's a plus or minus 3% accuracy claim. However, the survey, um, shows 73% participate weekly. So I don't know how you maintain a plus or minus 3% when we have hard data that shows the opposite of that or, or a different number than that. Um, Q5, I thought was pretty important. Only 42% wanted, were open to the idea of a rate hike to keep the same service. I understand why they didn't put that in their presentation. 78% value recycling, but only 42% valued enough to pay more. So I wonder if a new survey, um, would, would better show the Stillwater sentiment with respect to a pay increase, because how important is it? Well, when, when you start writing a check, things change a little bit. Um, so the bottom line, proposed increase would cost all residents $8 a month immediately. That's with no change to service. In five years, um, a new transportation station would be added at a cost of $10 a month. That's at, that's on top of the, the eight. So that would double the cost of the curbside program, more than double it, from 1.2 million to 2.7 million per year. If the city sinks money into infrastructure like the transfer station and sinks money into trying to decrease contamination and markets keep declining for these materials and contamination rates don't move significantly, then what? It's gonna get more expensive. Subscription model, um, would allow folks to choose this service for $10 a month. This would avoid a rate hike for all residents and according to NewGen, 80 to 85% of households would realize a cost savings. If mark, if the market for recyclables keeps declining, citizens would be able to choose to keep the services at a higher cost or to pass. Contamination would plummet as folks who truly value recycling and decide to opt in to curbside services are likely to recycle carefully and correctly. And I, I, I realized, I hadn't asked the CEO of, um, the guy I'd spoken to of the Recyclops. Um, I asked him what his contamination rate was via email earlier today and I got an email back. 5% is his average contamination rate. Um, so I'd ask you, if the option exists to provide citizens who want to recycle a way to do so at $10 per month and if we could help save 80 to 85% of households money and if we could decrease contamination rates of our recycling, why would we not explore this option? So my recommendation is I would like the council to investigate further the subscription model, contracted out or city provided. Um, disclaimer, I have zero skin in the game. I don't know Recyclops. I don't have any stake anywhere. I don't plan on running to take any of your positions. I don't, you know, I'm just here as a, as trying to speak to what I think is the right decision and, and speaking up for 80 to 85% of folks who go to work, go, go throughout their day and don't have time to come down to these meetings. And so that, that leads me into, oh, here in, so Bartlesville, mayor and council, um, to see if their company would be a good option moving forward, they have, they could provide us some valid feedback as they're actually using the company. And so that leads me to the thank you here. As I've been involved in this process, two hours a week on a Tuesday, I got three girls, two to 10, and a wife. That's, that's a commitment and I realize that commitment is minor compared to many of yours. And so I, I, I want to thank you guys for what you do up here. Regardless of what, you know, what disagreements we may have, um, I do understand that it takes a lot of time and energy and, and sacrifice to do what you guys are doing. And so I appreciate the time and the opportunity to come up here and speak to you guys and thank you as an order to all of you. So I'd be happy to take any questions. Anybody who wants any questions?
I'll just make a comment. Um, I enjoyed talking to you earlier, a couple of weeks ago, Riley, and I did follow up with Bartlesville, spoke to two of the counselors and also talked to the Recyclops, um, business person.
Was it Ryan?
No, I spoke to Melanie.
Okay.
And, um, a little bit of different information than, than you presented, but it's, you know, it is something to talk about and both of the Bartlesville counselors that I spoke to said way too early to say anything. They, they've only been working for a month. They had to have actually 500 customers before they started and 50. And, and that, uh, threshold is different for every city, depending on the area of the city and the population of the city. So, um, it, it was very interesting. Plus you have, you know, it's a, it's a bag system and you pay for your bags and if you run out of bags, you buy more bags and
Bags do come with a $10 subscription.
There's a $10 subscription and then there's a $10 charge for bags.
Uh, once a year.
Yeah, unless you run out.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's, it's, uh, you know, those are just
Sure.
Things, but I did appreciate your, uh, bringing that up and I enjoyed talking to the people I did about that.
I think one of the other things, um, my parents actually live in Bartlesville. Actually, I think I was the one that brought up Recyclops to begin with because my family, uh, living in Bartlesville didn't have an option for recycling. Um, it's something that that community's been talking about for a really long time and they weren't able to come up with a city-provided curbside program. Reading about Recyclops, I understand that, that they, that's kind of their niche market is those rural markets that aren't large enough to provide curbside recycling as a municipal service. I don't believe that they've ever come into a community that's had curbside recycling and is going back to a subscription service. So kind of downgrading from a municipal So, kind of downgrading from a municipal, a large, what's downgrading from a larger municipal service into a subscription, a private subscription service. So, I don't know, I don't think they're tested in that market, so to speak. We could end up being a really big market for them. We have a lot more than 500 people that have signed up or that are recycling, currently recycling. So, I do have some concern about, while I think it's neat, the way that they pick up in pickup trucks, they've got a really cool system for that. I worry about the economies of scale in the community the size of Stillwater where we've had curbside recycling as a municipal service, a larger amount of people recycling and how that would work in our community and if it would, those economies of scale would work as well. Or if we're going to have 500 little pickup trucks on every residential street for every day will be trash day and we'll regret that decision immensely. One of the things I'm, I mean, just one of the things as we look at it, if we were to look at a subscription, it's one of the things I'm concerned about.
Actually, if you look at the reviews, the customers are, seem to be pretty happy. The drivers are not happy at all with the.
It's kind of like an Uber for recycling or.
Do we know what the largest market that Recyclops services right now?
I don't. They have a great website.
1,300 is their largest customer base. It's a city in Utah.
What's the?
Their average is about 200, 250.
It's just, it's a big difference in scale for what we currently, I mean, if everybody signed up to recycle, it would be, I mean, it's one of the reasons why, I know we had a speaker earlier that was talking about, you know, private companies coming and picking up waste. And I think one of the reasons, I mean, I've seen that in cities, one of the reasons we don't like that sometimes is because everybody ends up with a different trash day. You end up with a lot more trucks on your, on your street. It can be very, very challenging to manage and organize that.
If I might say, I think they've been pretty open, as far as I understand, to working with you guys and establishing a set of rules by which they abide. So, you know, sectioning off certain areas as days, you know, I think they'd be willing to work with you guys. And I'd encourage somebody to ask the Bartlesville folks about that.
I was quite excited when I said Stillwater was talking about this, yes.
Well, Riley, certainly appreciate you presenting your alter, you know, the other alternatives that you guys discussed. I'm glad you were on the committee. You know, I know when I saw the list of people who had applied and I saw your name, I figured you were probably going to be a different voice on the committee, which I'm glad that, you know, we, you were on there and the other folks who had alternative opinions. I'm glad there was a mix of opinions. And so, we appreciate you presenting that information as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, do you guys have a, I mean, what's next?
Well, if you don't mind, because some of the numbers from NewGen was used in the Mr. Flack's presentation. Do we have a few minutes so Mr. Dave?
We got all night, Chris.
Can speak to some of these numbers?
Before I forget, one last thing before I forget. We just got the new results of our contamination on Friday. We're down to 19.53.
That's pretty good.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Dave Yonkey with NewGen Strategies and Solutions. I am the Managing Director for our Environmental Practice. Some of our numbers are being used and this is kind of where rumors and misinformation get put out there. So, I just kind of want things to be clear as to what's what. So, first of all, to be clear, right now, it costs you approximately $700,000 a year to operate your recycling program. That includes running your garbage trucks, your personnel, the processing fees. It's everything, okay?
Just on the recycling side?
Just on the recycling. Now, and the issue, and if you remember, when we first got hired in March, one of the first things we were asked to look at was recycling because there was an issue if Cedar Creek was not available come mid 2022, that you have to figure out what to do with your recycling. So, we looked at a number of those different options. I was here in July of 2019 and presented our different findings. So, to be clear, if you were to build that recycling staging facility, which is a facility where your recycling trucks would go to drop their recyclables, they are then use a front end loader, you shove them into an open top 18 wheeler, which is then hauled to a MRF, whether it's in Oklahoma City or Tulsa. It also could operate as your citizen collection center. You're going to add about $390,000 more a year. And you heard Chris mention that number. So, it's basically $2.50 per month per household to provide recycling. And here's the key issue. If you don't have Cedar Creek available in 2022, you've got to find a way to process your recyclables unless you're just going to shut the program down entirely. Okay? So, from our standpoint, a couple of things I want to mention. It's an additional $2.50. Again, that's not for another two years or so. And we do a lot of presentations like this to city councils, solid waste authorities. And I get it, nobody likes rate increases. I have yet to be before a council and they were happy that they had to pass a rate increase, okay? I've never seen it. It'd be great if you were the first, but I'm not holding my breath. But, there are certain things from an infrastructure standpoint you have to do to provide a city where people want to live. I'd also mention that 25% increase, that's off the 35 gallon rate. You folks have some of the lowest rates, 13.5 dollars for a 35 gallon, up to a 96 gallons, like 18.5 dollars. So, you know, $2.50 on 13.5 is going to be 20. I don't have my calculator in front of me, but yeah, it's going to be 20% or something. But, you actually should be really happy. Your solid waste utility is incredibly cost efficient. And while I'm at it, we're working on the cost of service study right now, which is still draft, but that's one of the other things I want to mention. Going out in the five-year forecast, we have some good information as far as where you are and what you're looking at for future rate increases that would be very, very negligible to the point of you're looking at maybe 50 cents on your street sweeping and then maybe a 50 cent increase in year three or four on the residential. The utility's in really good shape. So, if you're adding this, it's not like you're adding it on to another $5 or something like that. So, you're in really good shape from that standpoint. So, I just want to mention that on the numbers. Subscription rates. Allison Trulock from our was firm was here and she did nine workshops, I think it was nine with the folks. And she really had good stuff to say about you. And she doesn't say that to be nice. So, she really liked the participation. She asked a lot of good questions, really dug into it. And so, then we come from the number side also, and that's how we look at it. We can give you an opinion and I'm going to tell you about something we're seeing in the market for the last couple of years. But at the end of the day, our job is to do the analysis and then you folks make a decision. Is that how you want to spend, you know, your taxpayers' money? And that's your decision, but we have to give you good data. So, that's the $2.50. On the subscription rate issue, Allison, of all her nine presentations, she put one word that she would like to change where it said the 15 to 20% participation rate would be 15 to 20% if you did a subscription. That was the one city she showed as an example, okay? We are not saying, and I want to emphasize this, we are not saying if you were a subscription based program, you would only be 15 to 20% participants here. You have 70% of your folks have carts here, 73% of your citizens have carts here. That shows a lot of people want to recycle here. I'd be very concerned with the Recyclops kind of scenario for households handling that with the pickup system. It is kind of a, it's great for rural areas. For a city your size, I'd have serious concerns about that. To the question of greenhouse gas emission, I'd rather have one 20-ton truck running down than 100 pickups running everywhere. So, to be clear, your participation rate, if you did subscription, I would not be surprised if it was over 50 or 60%. And that changes the economics, okay? So, one of the things I'll tell you, bottom line, not that many cities do subscription. In fact, very few. And it's one of the reasons it's hard for us to find examples of those. I've got a couple of cities that have done subscription in the past and then it is very low percentage. But, it's one of these things where people say, hey, you know, let's look at recycling. If you want it, we'll do a subscription. And well, there's not a lot of interest, so it kind of fulfills, you know, the expectation that you're not going to have much. So, for a city like yours, I would not recommend a subscription based system. So, it goes to the next thing is observation, what we're seeing in the market. So, I only have two more points, observations and closing comments. I got through the numbers. On the observations, this is probably one of the biggest things we've been seeing from cities in the last two years. Last three to four years is when China has really been impacting. And then in the last two years where the markets have just really gone in the toilet. One of the things you are very fortunate with in Oklahoma is you have one of the top five states that have the closed loop where there actually is an end market for a lot of the materials, the cardboard, the mixed paper. You actually within like 20, 25 miles of TRT, Tulsa Recycling Transfer, their MRF in Tulsa, there are three glass processors. And I agree, glass, when I told some other folks in Texas, there's a glass broker that'll pay $25 a ton for mixed glass here in Oklahoma, they were envious because you're paying to ship it away. And the comments earlier about it being sand and heavy to transport, absolutely do not disagree. But, when you have three glass processors that are looking for glass, now that creates an opportunity for you. And they're over in Muskogee and north of Tulsa. So, you do have an opportunity there, just to mention. But on the recycling side, we have, I'm going to mention three cities real quick. Temple, Texas, about an hour north of Austin, very similar to you, about 60,000, 70,000 in population, but they have a recycling staging facility and they had to haul down. The markets were going downward. And so, they were like, what do we do? And so, we did an analysis. Their current balconies resource is the MRF that operates in Austin. They haul the materials. The city took over operation of the staging facility. And one of the issues that came before council, just like you in a work session, was do we want to pay for this recycling service? And they have very similar demographics to you when you're talking about some of those things with regard to wealth and, you know, what have you. And one of the things that came out and feedback to the city council members was that people expect this, just like they expect their garbage picked up, their water service should be clean and reliable and wastewater works. There's becoming an expectation, they expect recycling. So, that's something we're seeing. So, Temple, and trust me, Temple has folks that don't recycle either, but overall, the city said if we're going to have it as a service, we need to provide this to attract people and what have you. And then finally, city of Phoenix, their current rate's 2680. I was just out there February 11th. They were looking at having to do a significant rate increase. The recycling markets have been down. One of the things I want to mention and rumors start about, oh, it's all being landfill. Republic operates Phoenix's MRFs. They take, they process over 150,000 tons a year of recyclables. Republic, their National Recycling Coordinator rep was there at the Rate Advisory Committee where I was speaking and where we did their analysis. And he said, we have never recycled any of your materials. The price may not be good for it, but it is being used. It's not going to the landfill, none of the 150,000 tons. It comes down to finding the right market. For them, they actually from Phoenix rail their plastics to the Carolinas, most likely for carpet because as was mentioned earlier. And that's an example of where there is a market and it's finding those markets. So, I just want to emphasize what we saw then, bottom line in Phoenix, the citizens, the city council in November told city staff to go out and get input from the citizens. I would never do this to Chris, but the city staff in Phoenix had to do 51 meetings throughout the city of Phoenix. So, I'm not saying that, Chris. But, also to give you an idea, it's 400,000 households. It's the fifth largest city in the country. Here's the thing that was really interesting. They did those meetings, they did a survey also. They got 6,000 people to respond to the survey. And what was really interesting, there were folks, to be clear, that were anti-recycling. And there were some emails that were going out saying, well, you got to respond to the survey and everything. Bottom line, at the end, they had 80% of the folks saying, we support the rate increase so we can keep our recycling program. And to be clear, they had not had a rate increase in 11 years. They raised, they're raising their rate in two phases, April 2020 and January 2020. And they're going up six, and I'm not saying you do this, you don't have to because you only need two and a half. They're going up $6.50 from like 2680 to 33. If you check this, it's in the National Trade Journals, Solid Waste Trade Journals. But, and even there, a lot of discussion about affordability and those things. But, there was an emphasis on what the reputation of the city is and what they want. Final one and then closing comments. On the phone with Ada, Oklahoma, they, our folks in Richardson do their water wastewater rates. They have some solid waste issues. They're looking at landfill disposal options. One of the things, just in passing, when they said, well, what are we going to do about recycling? Is that changing or anything? Because China, it's terrible. And, you know, it was mentioned, nothing's changing with recycling. Our citizens expect it. We need to keep it. And we moved on to landfill options. So, those are my comments about generally we're seeing the market, people are staying in recycling. And then just in closing, the one thing I'd mention, you've got 70% of your folks have carts. That represents a very significant percentage. And again, when I look at that, there are a lot of services you provide as citizens that not everybody uses, whether it's libraries, senior citizen centers. And if you have 75% of the citizens using this service, it's just pretty strong. So, those are my closing comments. Any questions?
Any questions, council?
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Staff has a recommendation. You ready for that?
Love to hear what you recommend, Chris.
So, a motion to approve the citizens recycling task force recommendation to construct a recycling staging facility with a convenience collection center and purchase adequate amount of land to build a transfer station or city-owned MRF in the future. That could be 20 years down the road. But also, we'll say again, they're not asking for any, spend any money at this time or raise any rates. We will go back and we got to look for land if this is approved and we would be coming back before any money spent.
So, I'm not even sure what that means from a city, from our standpoint in terms of a motion at this point. I mean, what are we, from a city council standpoint, even telling staff to do other than this is the option we want you to look at in the future? I mean, is that?
What your motion probably should be if you, that's the way you want them to go.
Counselors? Just to be, just to be clear, so any action that would be taken on this recommendation would have to come back before us?
Oh, yes.
For anything?
There's not, yeah, there's nothing in here that you could.
So, basically just telling staff to pursue the option of building our own staging facility.
And what that might look like.
Yeah.
Right, because you'd have to, I mean, you're talking about, you know, just like the purchase of land, you'll have to authorize that. The construction of a facility, you would have to authorize separately. I mean, there are multiple steps in this, so.
Do we even know, I mean, when we talk about the purchase of land, Chris, I mean, we know that we don't have land that this is going to work on at this point?
I don't know that for a fact. I don't know that for a fact. I mean, that's something we'll have to look further into. You know, there would have to be an RFP done at some point for someone to build this facility, an RFP done for the process, which what processor we're going to go with, someone designed the facility, so there's a lot of moving parts, like Mr. Norman said.
I think that also highlights the reason why making some, taking some sort of action on this is so important, because there are so many moving parts to this. And if we have a contract that's ending two years, twenty-twenty-two sounds like it's a really faraway time, but it's really not that far. And so giving them the opportunity to investigate these, to look into them, to figure out the process for implementing them, if this is what we decide we want to do, I think they need that time to do that.
Right, I mean, you're probably, about a year, probably get the facility designed and built. Now, the RFP for the processor stuff, that'll be a pretty quick one, but then the land, I mean, find out if we have land, and if we don't have land, then we got to find some land to buy.
Sometimes, Chris, when we get these reports, there's an, there's alternatives listed. If I ask you what the alternative was to this recommendation, what would you say?
You would either have to check into something like Recyclops or not recycle. I mean, I don't see any other, we looked at, the task force looked at all the options, even from us trucking it in trash trucks up there, and this was the, if we're going to stay in the recycling business, this was the best, you know, efficient, economic way to do it.
So I think that's the point I was hoping you would make, which is basically like, if we're going to recycle as a city, this is the way it needs, this is the way it's going to have to look in the future?
This is the best way for the community.
And we're going to have to look at how we make that happen. Or we're going to make the decision to say, when this, when this contract ends in two years, we're going to basically drop city recycling and potentially maybe offer a subscription option, but as a city, we're just not going to do it anymore.
Correct.
Okay. Well, is there a further discussion or comment on it from the council? Yes, sir? You remember the task force, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
Come on up, David.
My name is Damian Davis, and I really appreciate the opportunity for y'all listening on behalf of the task force and Mr. Yonkey, and then also the renewable energy. Lately, it's been a big concern, environmental concerns. And personally, from looking from the inside and outside, lately, I've been kind of working in the environmental field in the state of Louisiana, in the state of Colorado, on a lot of different perspectives. And what I look like, look at, the city of Stillwater cannot be compared to many other places. When you look at the city of Tulsa and you look at the city of Oklahoma City, they're a major metro area, they're doing a lot of incredible things. They have subscription-based things that they're doing in Tulsa and in Oklahoma City with some companies that I, I'm associated with and I know of, and I met through various conferences. And then also on top of that, I really think that the city of Stillwater have a lot of assets. When you ask about the alternatives, I would, I would make an alternative bet, not to go overboard Mr. Knight's position, but I would say that the city of Stillwater, you councilmen look at the assets that y'all currently own and operate, you know, you guys have a ton of wastewater facilities, treatment facilities in the state of Colorado. There's two places that I'm actually currently working with right now to kind of help them with a better solution of what they, they're doing right now with their sludge. And so they're taking that and they're, they're making compost out of it. So right now, just, we're currently in the construction phase right now to make a facility so that they can actually do compost, and then just kind of like the city of Norman and the, the city of Midwest City. You also have a current staff member that used to work with Midwest City that I believe would have a lot of great expertise in this opportunity when it comes to the composting side of things. Then on the recycling side, as Mr. Yonkey mentioned, there's a lot of local places in the state of Oklahoma, state of Utah, Kentucky, there's even a place in the United Kingdom. A lot of people, when they do, when they talk about recycling, they look at this China as the end marketplace, but ultimately, there's other places. There's a place in the United Kingdom that I've had the pleasure to communicate with, and I'm currently actually en route to actually go visit them. They actually accept a lot of plastic, and they're making road supplements. And that's something that the state of Oklahoma is having, been having a big problem with when it comes to infrastructure. So I would say to look in kind of the current assets that you guys currently own, and to see what we can do as a, as a city to operate within the city and not really outside, outsource the work or just the income ability that we have out of the city of Stillwater. Because I believe not only will it just help us as a city and solve these problems that we have of the reason of creating this task force, but then also on top of that, it would create, create jobs for people that are moving to the city of Stillwater. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Counsel, further discussion on this item, or is there...
Chris, he's made his official recommendation.
Correct, yeah, he has.
I just want to quickly say thank you to the task force. It was a privilege to get to work with you all for those nine weeks. I can attest to the fact that you guys did the work. I mean, you really dove hard into the, into the trash, so to speak, but really looking at all the data, really asking a lot of questions, challenging each other, challenging the staff that was working with you. I also want to thank Chris and the other staff that spent their Tuesday evenings at the library for these nine weeks. I think it was a really incredible coming together of the community around this topic and this issue.
I think nine meetings in Stillwater?
Nine meetings?
Per capita is more than fifty-one in Phoenix.
Yeah. Two, two hours. I personally have never worked with a, in a public engagement endeavor where they voted to meet on a weekly basis. I was really, really impressed with the level of commitment that they, that they had to this task, and they, they really took it seriously. They asked a lot of really, really good questions. Just to kind of maybe draw us to some sort of conclusion here, I think for me, recycling and the whole process with our task force really drew out the need to maintain and even create further flexibility in our solid waste management practices. And for me, it's not just, you know, recycling is one of those options. I think recycling is a part of our solid waste management practice. I think as you look across the country, that's, that's what we're seeing. We're looking at opportunities to divert waste to other areas besides our landfills. So I think to maintain that flexibility, I think the task force recommendation really gives us the best opportunity to do that. I personally am, it is sad, it's hard to, to look at a potential rate increase. Unfortunately, I think that's where the markets are right now. Maybe it's something, it was something that was discussed with the task force. We don't do a lot of this in Stillwater, but it's maybe something, you know, across the board in utilities, we, we look for opportunities to provide subsidies to offset some of these costs potentially. I think that's something I'd like us to look into, maybe not just for waste, but maybe in our other utilities as well. But I would like to, my, I'd like to, what are we, how do I phrase it?
Well, what I was, I was actually looking at the way this was worded, you're not really approving the recommendation, you would be accepting the recommendation and directing staff to pursue this option and to report back to the city council.
Okay. I would like to, say that again, I don't want to say it wrong.
So, you want me to just read the motion?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, so the motion would be to accept the citizen recycling task force recommendation to construct a recycling staging facility with a convenience collection center and purchase adequate amount of land to build a transfer station or city-owned MRF in the future, and direct staff to move forward with this option and to report back.
By, you can either set a date or you can...
Chris, I don't think, are we ready to attach a date to it?
No, but if you give me one, we'll, we'll do it.
I think there's a lot.
Could we sit?
You just want to leave the date open?
Could we just leave the date open?
And just to report back?
Okay.
To the city, to council.
That's my motion.
That's your motion?
You want me to read it again?
I think we got it.
Yeah. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before we vote, Chris, I just wanted to ask about with NewGen, what is the rest of this, the process with our sort of study that they're doing, and when are we going to have more?
Well, the cost of service is just about done, and I believe April, April, NewGen will be here to present that. And then the waste management study, a little bit long, May? May on the waste management study.
Because this, this is really going to all roll into that anyway, right? I mean, this is going to be part of that whole discussion.
We was really needing to know what we're going to do with this, so it can be implemented into the cost of service study and the waste management study.
So again, I mean, approving this motion tonight has zero money actually attached to it, or rate increases or anything like that attached to it. It's just saying, this is the option we want you guys to pursue and to continue to look into.
We'll start pursuing, and as we find out things, we'll have to come back to you for every little stage in the process.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. So we have a motion and a second on this item. Further discussion? Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that motion is approved. Again, thank you to the task force for your work and for being here tonight to present your findings. Okay, that takes us to the other big item on the agenda tonight. We have six properties to, tonight have a hearing to determine whether the following structures are dilapidated and/or abandoned, subject to abatement under eleven OS twenty-two dash one twelve and eleven OS twenty-two dash one twelve point four. City council will vote and may take other action authorized by said statute at this meeting with regard to these properties. Mr. Norman, would you like to introduce the?
Beth Ann Childs will be presenting for us tonight. She's our special city attorney, assistant city attorney for these items.
And just for those of you out here who want to know what we're looking at behind the desk, this is a giant binder of information provided by Beth Ann. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. My name is Beth Ann Childs, and I am the principal in the Childs Law Firm. Before we delve into the properties, I'm going to take just a moment and make a couple of very, very brief, general comments. As you know, I was tasked with addressing dilapidated structures here within the city of Tulsa. I represent a number of municipalities, and what I can tell you is that addressing these types of structures is very, very important to you as a community. One thing that I would like to mention is, I would like to express my thanks to the code enforcement officers that assisted me through this process. Code enforcement is a thankless, thankless job, and they have, they do a great job, they've been very, very responsive to assisting me with compilation of the Gargantuan notebook that you have in, in front of you, so I want to thank them. Also, the legal department has been absolutely invaluable in terms of the preparation of the materials that are tonight. One thing that I will tell you is that, is I went back and I reviewed the previous process that you all followed to address these types of dilapidated structures, and it occurred to me that would be very helpful to you to prepare what I've titled a written official record. And contained in the record for each one of these properties, various things, pictures, I think, being the most important. Picture, like they say, a picture's worth a thousand words, and, and so code enforcement was very, very helpful in terms of going back and helping me create a record that hopefully will assist you in making a determination in this. There was also an affidavit of, of code enforcement officers, basically notifying you all that all the information was true and correct, violations of the International Property Management Code, activity summaries, and prior code enforcement actions, which I thought was a very, very important in order to paint a picture of what had gone awry with regard to these particular properties. In advance of the public hearing, the, the property owners were provided not only with a notice of hearing advising them of the public hearing tonight, but also a copy of the notebook. So they, they would have received a notebook, something like this, for each one of the properties. They also would have received a letter from me, asking them to contact me, and I actually heard from all but one of the property owners. And then, of course, we went ahead and posted the, the structures themselves. In addition to providing them with the materials, we thought that it was important to provide a draft resolution, which is actually your action item on the next section. But the, I think that the resolution is important because it incorporates all of the actions that have been taken to date, it identifies the property specifically. Additionally, it provides that the landowners will have an opportunity to remove the structures within ninety-day period of time. If they have not done that, then automatically, the power will revert to the city manager, who will then have the ability to move forward with demolition. My feeling is that that will save considerable time on the part, not only of the council, but staff, and also sets reasonable expectations for the property owners. The first public hearing before you this evening is one sixteen South Main. This is a residential structure. If you look at the, at the images, and I apologize, I am not very accustomed to operating this particular equipment. But if you go back and you take a look at the information that was previously provided to you, it's actually owned by North Main Properties LLC. It's a residential structure, there actually, thank you, there actually is a frontage that is a commercial structure. That is not what we're talking about, we're only talking about the residential structure. The residential structure, as identified by the photographs, is actually in very poor condition. There have been four prior actions, code actions, and there have been a number of criminal contacts. So what, I did have an opportunity to discuss this with Mr. Badayan prior to the meeting. Very quickly, he advised me that this property is, is actually involved in litigation, and that a lease pendants, or lease pendants, you say it a different way, has been filed with regard to this particular property. I don't know if that's the case. It doesn't really change my recommendation that you go ahead and approve the resolution. I did get his contact information, and I'll follow up with that. And he is present here, and I'm sure he would like to make some comments.
Come on up. Good evening. Ahmed Badayan, fifty-seven oh four, Pecan Hill Court. Sorry, Paula.
I'm just going to work on this while...
All right, hey, work away. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you guys tonight, and thanks to Ms. Childs for meeting with me earlier. I want to start off by saying, as a forty-three-year resident of this community, I fully support this action, and I am glad that you guys are going through this process. I think it's long overdue. I am somewhat embarrassed of the condition of the property, and I'd hoped to, done some demolition work myself years ago, actually. However, there is a lawsuit involved with this property that could potentially cause some more problems for me if I was to do that, without getting into too much detail. Ms. Childs has kindly said that she would look into that and see how that, that may affect things, although she doesn't represent me or anything. But I would like to ask, if possible, if we can table, I believe it's six A, for a future meeting, just so I have a chance to possibly meet further with my attorney. I have spoken with him, he did discuss an injunction, to be very frank and honest, I don't know that I want to go through the cost and time and expense of doing that, if, if there is other avenues that we can, we can take, just to simply work through this process and the legal system to get us to where we need to be. Once we do get to that point, my intention would be to take care of this demolition myself, as it, as it was in the past. So, any questions?
Do you have a sense of the timeframe?
I don't, Will. It's, or, Mr. Joyce, sorry. We've, unfortunately, this has taken tens of thousands of dollars and several years up until this point. And I would hope, and honestly, my opinion is, it should be resolved within, you know, the next six to nine months, just based on things that have happened. I'd be happy to share a little bit of that with you.
Well, I guess, I mean, my, my major question would just be, what do you think the effect of the city putting a demolition order on the house would be? How would it affect your, your legal position?
Well, part of, there's a couple of things. One would be that the other party would potentially argue that I allowed the property to get into this condition and disadded another car... to get into this condition and this added another cost or devalued the property. The other would be that if the result of the court process ends up being that it's, that I retain ownership of the property, then I would be incurring that cost, whereas I, frankly, I can do it myself cheaper than the city could.
Okay. Counselors?
I know, it's kind of a difficult thing. I apologize, but.
Actually, actually, I'm sorry for the conflict that you have. And in the, in the resolution, you have 90 days. I, you know, end of 90 days, sometimes we are open to another discussion or at the end of 60 days. I would be opposed to, to just tabling it.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's a good point. If, if, for whatever reason, there's something that happens or changes within that timeframe, you'd always, you know, be able to come back and say.
Okay. And I was not aware of that. I'm, this is my first time through this process.
Sure. You know, I think our interest is just to make sure, you know, that we're keeping these things moving forward.
Sure.
And, you know, not, not to be flippant, but everybody seems to have special circumstances.
Sure.
Right? When we get into these and so, you know, what we're trying to do is just kind of put a fairly standard process in place and, and if you have, you know, we've done these where we ordered, you know, they said they would go ahead and take care of the demolition and for whatever reason, they came and said, hey, we need another little time to do it and, and we've been able to do that, so.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting that I would take care of that within this 90 days. I just, it would be pending the result of the court case.
Yeah. I mean, I think for us, it, it makes sense to, to move forward to the extent we can at this point and then if you have, you know, whatever happens with your case, if that needs, if you need to come back and say, can I do something else here or whatever, you can do that.
Okay. So, just to be clear, I can, at whatever point throughout this 90 days, if, if something does change, I could come back and address this or how, how, I don't, we can?
We are pretty strict.
Yes. I mean, if you've got a special circumstance that comes up and you feel like you, oh, you know, something's been resolved and now you know a timeframe that's changed a little bit, you can come back and let us know.
Okay.
Instead of us at the end of that 90 days going, okay, sorry, now it's time for us to go demolish it. If the circumstances are such, 75 days from now, that you can come explain to us why that shouldn't happen, then we could potentially, you know, push that forward. But, you know, we would go ahead and put the order in place now and then we can address changes, you know, circumstances that change in the, in the future.
That's fair enough.
Does that work?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ahmed.
All right.
Appreciate you being here. So, are we gonna address, do you want, we're gonna do all these in order and then come back and do the resolutions in order or do you wanna do?
You can just go ahead and do the resolutions as you complete the hearings, if you wanna do that.
Do you have a preference?
That's acceptable.
We have a, under, on item 7A on the, the agenda, we have resolution CC-20-2, which is a resolution of the store city council declaring structure located at 116 South Main Street dilapidated and abandoned and public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11 OS-22, excuse me, 11 OS 22-122. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC 2020-2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Sorry. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. All right. That takes us to 722 East, 722 East Main.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had the opportunity to speak to Mr., I'm sorry, do you have?
It was 722 East 12th Avenue, just to be clear.
Okay. I've had the opportunity to speak to Mr. McLennan twice. He is actually present this evening. He indicated to me during our conversations that he would really like the opportunity to put a new roof on the building and attempt to rehabilitate it. As you can see from the photographs in, in the package, the, the structure is not in great condition. After visiting with the code enforcement officers, it's still their position, I believe, that the, that the building should be demolished. One thing of note here is that there actually have been 10 prior code cases.
Did you say 10?
10, mainly for weeds and grass and, and trash and things like that, but the, the city's actually had to move forward with filing liens on this, which is a drain on city resources and takes a considerable amount of time. Additionally, he has owned this property since 2006, so there really hasn't been any substantial progress on it. But staff recommendation is that you move forward with approval of the resolution. It would give him 90 days to make substantial progress if he elected to go that direction. If he did not, then it's our position, we'd like for you to move forward.
90 days to make substantial progress.
Well, I mean, we're, one thing that you could do is the resolution is written in such a way that it directs the demolition of, of the structure. It is entirely possible, if you wanted, say, to table it, I mean, we could make, we could change the resolution to where it gave him an opportunity to repair the roof, but I mean, that, that's not really the direction that, that I'm recommending that, that you go, but that, that is something that he's interested in talking to you about.
Do you know, without me flipping through this, although I can, okay, so no utilities in the last nine years? Do we know when the first violation was written?
I do. If you'll let me grab my next notebook, I can tell you that.
Sorry.
No, not at all. It looks to me like the first one was 2006, 53-57. I think that that was just prior to him obtaining the property, though. The next case number would have been in 2007 and it was case number 5894.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if I said that right, but I appreciate you being here.
It's, gets messed up quite a bit. First of all, I, I would like to apologize that we even have to be here. I haven't, I'm not gonna go through litany of excuses or problems or issues or anything else. There, as far as the liens, which kind of struck me wrong a little bit, there, there hasn't been one lien placed on it that I'm aware of and that was just this year when I talked to Paul. They had mowed it in August with, without letting me know, which, and they didn't place a lien on it until December. So, and then I just came down and paid it in January, right after I found out it was there, I got the notification and I, I've, I've always done paid it. I've been charged twice for mowing it. Other than that, I've always come down and mowed it and taken care of it. Every time I've gotten a notification, that was a problem. I have a relationship with the neighbor, kind of a decent relationship. He normally calls me and says, hey, Steve, this is going on. I've had several people trying to mow it for me. But, all that being said, we'll, we'll get past all that. I'm a little bit nervous, so. I've never been in one of these deals. But I would like, the resolution is for 90 days. I would like to go, there was two structures, which I don't know if all this other stuff was put on there. When I bought the property, there was two structures on there. There was one in the front of this house and I demolished it and tore it down. I've taken out a bunch of trees that were falling over onto the neighbor's properties and those kind of things and I have been working on it. So, what I would like to propose, what I would propose is that instead of the 90 days, which are, they said, I'm, I'm currently working on another house in Chandler. I expect that I should be done with that within 60 days. I should be done with that, so then I would like that 90 days to come. And I will go through it and open it up and look at it. There is a hole in the roof. I haven't been into it in quite some time. I had boards screwed up on the door so that nobody could get in, so it wasn't easy for me to just jump in and look and see what's going on inside. But if I look inside and I determine the floors and, and the walls have rotted out enough that there's, you know, that's not gonna be sustainable, then I will tear it down myself without any problem. I tore the first structure down. I have the equipment to do that and that kind of thing. So, what I would propose is that if I go in and look at it and determine, once I take the roof off and see what that is, I can either re-roof it and, and, and then put new siding on the side of it and I can do that within 150 days, which would be the end of July. So, by the end of July, I'll either have it torn down and removed or it'll be a place that looks decent on the outside. I'll still have to work on the inside, but.
When did you obtain the property?
I obtained it in 2006, I think. I've had it for quite a while. I have six properties in Bristow and now one in Chandler, but I had some medical problems. Like I, I lost my job. I've been unemployed for five years, so there was things and I didn't wanna get into all that. There's, you know, I've had it for quite a while.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if you've done any work on it in that time?
As I said, I've already taken a bunch of trees. I tore down the.
But on the structure?
On, I'd already tore down one existing, not this structure. All I did is boarded up so that nobody could get into it.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, that doesn't seem to be the case anymore.
No. The back doors was torn open, which I told Paul. I said, I can't, you know, I can't help somebody that's torn it down and I, I just went back and screwed up some more boards and, and taking care of that. But as far as the, the structure was enclosed and clean and everything at that point when I bought it, and I haven't done anything that except for tear down the first building, which, you know, there was time involved in that and I, you know, I did. I apologize. This is, this is not something that you guys should have to deal with and take your time. All I just ask is, you know, either, you know, we can go ahead with the resolution as it is or give me the allowance for the July 31st deadline. I will have a new roof and siding on it or I will have it torn down and everything will be gone.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Okay.
Counselors, any comments on this one?
I guess my hope would be, I appreciate, thank you for being here. I guess my hope would be if you feel that you can make a determination as to whether or not the structure would be viable for, for a roof, that you'd be able to make that determination certain, that determination certainly within the 90-day period in order to determine whether or not it's coming down or you felt that it was a viable structure.
And I, and I don't know if you've got it, but, and I would agree, that would be, I should be able to do that. My problem being is that I'm currently working on a house that is, you know, 2700, a special house in Chandler and I'm gonna take, you know, 30, 60 days to finish that and get it ready to be able to sell.
Yep.
Before I can commit jumping on this one too, but I don't wanna have a little minimal now. So, I, I mean, I appreciate that and I can probably go in, you know, within a week and say, yeah, it's gonna, I need to tear it down, but I will still, still keep that time because of my other house that I have.
It does seem like the timeframe, if you're, if you're saying that you'll be done with your Chandler house in 60 days and you only need a week to evaluate it, that's well within the 90 days to be able to give us a.
Correct. The other, the excess time would be if, as if, if I determine it needs to be torn down, the extra time would just be for me to be able to rehabilitate it so that it could be, you know, I can bring it in and I can discuss that with Paul or, well, you're turning here, you know, what, it's time goes along, taking pictures and we can make that determination. I just.
Yeah. I, I think, I mean, I think we, I understand the, what, what you'd like to see us do and I, and I, again, I appreciate you being here to, to let us know. I mean, I think from my standpoint, given the timeframes involved to this point and the, the current condition of the structure, I would be, be shocked if there's much that can be done. You know, I, I think from my standpoint, the best, best option for us is to, to go ahead and adopt this resolution and if at some point between, before that 90 days is up, you've, again, you've figured out some way to, alternate, some alternative to tearing it down, you could let us know at that point, but.
Okay.
I mean, I, we've, you know, not to, you know, from the standpoint of the city of Stillwater, this structure has been in this condition for more than a decade and we as a, we as a community don't have the, I mean, I understand you've got other things going on and you're working on other houses of other parts of the state, but we have an interest in, in protecting our community and making sure structures like this are not a hazard.
Correct.
And so.
I wouldn't say that it hasn't been in this condition for 10 years.
Well, I mean, if it was having, it had code violations in '06 and '07, so I mean.
The code violation for the yard not being mowed. Now, there was no code violation, there's no code violation other than mowing, none.
Okay. Well, but you indicated you haven't done any work to the property in that timeframe, so it's gotten to this.
No.
To this condition.
That's all right. I disagree because I have torn, taken down trees that were in the way and.
Sure.
And I've all taken down another structure and I have worked on it. I haven't worked on this particular building of the two buildings that were on it, but I understand and I, I guess I'll just, for clarification purposes, is if I, if I determine that it's workable and I determined, yes, I wanna rehabilitate it and I put a new roof and siding on it, does that eliminate the, the demolition model?
I mean, that would.
Because that would make no sense for me to go ahead and do that and then you guys said, no, you're tearing it down anyways.
I mean, I, I can't, you know, we can't say, if you go, I mean, if we put a demolition order on this house and you go spend money to try to rehabilitate it and it doesn't, still doesn't meet standards, it's still gonna be demolished, so I, I can't tell you.
Correct. Well, I'll do the demolition, but if, if, my question, I guess, for you is how do I get to the point that if I, if I go in and say, yeah, the structure is not bad enough that I'm gonna tear it down, I wanna put a new roof on it and, and put siding on it, at what point do I get a commitment from the city that they're gonna say, yeah, it doesn't need to be torn down because it's been rehabilitated?
Well, I mean, what, what we're doing tonight is saying the current condition of the structure is in violation of our city codes and of state law.
Correct.
And we're gonna put this order in place.
Correct. So, that's 90 days. Within 90 days, it has to be torn down.
Yes.
Or, so you're saying I have no option, period, end of story. I have to tear it down?
I mean, I, I don't, yeah, I mean, at this point, the structure has gotten to the point where it is now a hazard to the community and is a dilapidated structure and, and we don't feel that it's rehabilitatable and that you need to take action to remove the structure or we will within 90 days. That would be the order, yes. And, and if you feel like you could have taken time to figure out if this house was, could have, had been work done on it, I would have thought since 2006, you would have had that opportunity to decide whether to fix the house or not.
And, 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 and that determination was for me, that yes, it was. I have just not been able to.
But you haven't.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna go into, like you say, the litany of excuses. Everybody's got special circumstances.
And I get it. I get it, but we're talking about 14 years.
That's correct.
Of dilapidation of this house sitting in our community with nothing being done to it. So, I, it's hard for me to say, oh, if we give you another 90 days or 120 days, that all of a sudden, this is now gonna happen because we're talking about 14 years of it not happening.
You are, you are correct and that's.
And I appreciate your circumstances and I, there's always.
Period, end of story, what you're, what I'm saying now is the vote's gonna be, you want me to tear the house down, period?
That, that would be the order if we vote on it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, further discussion on this item or is there a motion on the resolution 22-20-3? Excuse me, CC-20-20-3.
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2020-3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this resolution, just to read the resolution since I didn't before. Resolution of the store city council declaring the structure located at 722 East 12th Avenue dilapidated and abandoned and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the general public and the community and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to 11 OS 22-122. We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, resolution 20 dash, excuse me, CC-2020-3 is adopted. We'll move to item 6C, 723 West High Point.
This is just a little bit different because it's an apartment, a multifamily structure. I visited with Melissa Florentino earlier. She's actually present today. She and her partners have indicated that they are going to move forward with demolition. They actually possess the ability to get that done. She indicated that the 90 days was a, a little bit of a closed timeframe, but I told her that once the 90 days ran, that it would then be referred to the city manager's office for him to make a determination. So, there would be a few days, I believe, which would meet those expectations, but I, I appreciate her getting back in touch with me and I feel like this is a good, good move for the council to move forward with that and I believe she is present.
Ms. Florentino, would you like to make any comment or add anything to the?
Well, I think it's important that we would have more time.
Yeah, and what we've done.
And it's a new structure.
Sure. What we've done in the past with these is, is basically within that 90-day frame, if, if you've gotten, you know, permits necessary and you're showing substantial work towards that, we, we wouldn't jump in and, and short-circuit you necessarily, so we would expect within that 90-day timeframe to see some substantial steps towards that demolition happening. And then, again, it's the city manager's call to, to make, you know, there's no reason for us to jump in and start to do all that work again. So, as long as you're making progress and we're seeing that, that actually happening, there shouldn't be any problem with, with the timeframe. Counselors, we have a resolution 2020-4, a resolution of the store city council declaring structure located. a resolution of the store, City Council declaring structure located at seven twenty-three West High Point Drive dilapidated and abandoned and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the general public and the community and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to eleven O S twenty-two dash one twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution CC dash twenty-two, twenty twenty dash four.
It's tough, isn't it? It's hard to say.
Twenty-second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, resolution twenty twenty dash four is adopted. That takes us to eight oh-eight East Seventeenth.
I had the opportunity to visit with one of the property owners, Ms. Keeg. She actually, along with her brother, who lives out of state, they inherited the property. They had actually been in the process of trying to move forward with demolition. One thing she indicated she was having a little bit of trouble with was finding a plumber that would cap off the sanitary sewer connection for her. But I did speak with her last week and they're, they're willing to move forward with this. And so our recommendation is that you approve it. But I, I believe she'll be here tonight.
Would you like to add anything?
I really don't have anything to add. I'm ready to go through and try to make a decision for it.
Okay. We appreciate that. And I, I think that if you need to talk with Development Services, I'm sure they'll, they'll help you out with whatever you need. Okay, so we have a resolution twenty, CC dash twenty twenty dash five, a resolution of the store, City Council declaring the structure located at eight oh-eight East Seventeenth Avenue dilapidated and abandoned and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the general public and the community and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to eleven O S twenty-two dash one twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution CC twenty twenty dash five.
Second.
He said it first time, he didn't even stutter.
No, I don't.
Please vote.
I've been practicing that for thirty minutes now.
With a vote of five to zero, resolution CC dash twenty twenty dash five is adopted. That takes us to twelve oh-five South Duck Street.
We were not able to obtain service despite the fact that we attempted two different locations. And Mr. Lamb had, well, what I can't say is that it was posted. And so that meets all the statutory requirements. Because there was no mortgage on the property, you weren't required to publish. Mr. Lamb had spoke with, spoken with code enforcement officers a couple of times. We, we were optimistic that maybe he was going to sign an authorization to authorize a tear down of the, this particular structure. But we weren't able to make contact with him. And I know code enforcement, actually, I think they tried to call him. And so we, we've made numerous efforts to do that. Obviously, the home is in, in very poor condition. You've had a lot of burglaries, suspicious persons. It, it really is the textbook case for the health, safety and welfare. So our recommendation is that you approve the resolution.
Is Mr. Lamb here? Yeah. This one seems like a pretty fair case. We have resolution CC dash twenty twenty dash six, a resolution of the store, City Council declaring the structure located at twelve oh-five South Duck Street dilapidated and abandoned and a public nuisance detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of the general public and the community and ordering the dilapidated structure to be torn down and removed pursuant to eleven O S twenty-two dash one twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC dash twenty twenty dash six.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that resolution's adopted. We will move on to thirty-three fourteen East Fourth Avenue.
Yes, last but not least, this property is owned by Ricky Lynn Cole. This structure was actually the subject of a fire that took place on September twenty-second of two thousand and fourteen. He has done some work, if you notice, in the packet of materials on the back. I believe that there were some new windows and some siding placed in. But if you look at the photographs that were taken in advance of this, there still is significant damage that was as a result of the fire. One thing that he told me when, when we spoke earlier today was, he does want to try to finish the work on this. But of course, our concern is from a structural standpoint. This has been in place for over five and a half years. I think that he has encountered probably some hardships. But it, it remains the recommendation of staff that you move forward with approval of the resolution.
Is there an owner here for this?
Mr. Cole.
Mr. Cole?
Yeah, I'm not really accustomed to speaking to these people. Thank you. I have had a couple of strokes and I'm very thankful that I can even do the things that I do. But if you look at this picture, the front of this house has a new gable on it, has new siding. It's been painted. That's not, wood is not really in bad shape. It's not been on there very long. The roof is not good at all. The damage that was done to it was only done mainly over the garage. And I have spoken with Mr. Ghost about coming. And we have a time set up to get together and make a plan to get this thing fixed. I want to get it fixed. I intend on getting it fixed. I've been working on it. You know, I have not owned this since the time that was the fire. But from the time that I got it, I had plans for it. I would have had more done.
Sir, did you say that you purchased the property after the fire?
I purchased the property at a tax sale.
Okay.
And I got, I let her a couple of weeks ago and I've worked on it. I haven't got everything done that I need to do because I've been running around trying to, I had a contractor, our fan. I can't begin to guess on his last name. I think most of you know him. He came, he gave me an estimate for replacing the roof. I believe that Mr. Ghost and I will figure out some way of doing it. I had, for a long time, wanted to tear off the back half and to put a second floor on it. But I have a half, half a floor. But I have decided that I just need to get it done and get it finished.
Are you doing this work yourself, sir?
I do as much of it as I can do. And if I can't, if I can't do it, I will find someone who can do it. I have grown up working on houses, mainly our own houses that we were living in at the time. I had a house in Monticello and it had a building in the back of it, not too much smaller than this. It was twenty by thirty. And it was just sitting out there. I had taken the time to, to make it look, to redo all the inside of it. I put it, and it made it a very nice place. And I know that I can do the same thing to this. I know I'm not as good.
Sir, do you, do you feel like you have the, the time and the resources to be able to complete it?
Yes, sir, I do. I'm retired on disability retirement.
Do you, do you have a timeframe or a sense of the timeframe? If you get a, you said you're working with Mr. Ghost. If you guys get a plan together, how long do you, do you have a sense of how long it would take?
Well, again, I put new windows in it as, as well as the siding and stuff. The, and I'm not sure exactly what you mean when you say habitable. If you mean where it has to be with everything in it, the sheeting, the, the, the drywall and all the painting done and new appliances in there.
Well, I don't think that would be necessary for, for a code, you know, to, to get it to, to code. I mean, securing the facility and, you know, the roof and the, the sorts of structural issues that, that make it a, you know, potentially a hazard to people, right? I mean, the concern is if, if animals and, and people or if kids, you know, could get in and, and play around. I mean, that, that, the stuff that makes it a hazard to the, to the other folks in the community, that's the stuff that that we're, we're dealing with at this kind of hearing.
It's being secure. You can see the new windows on it. This, there's only one on this one, but the backside has also been painted.
Have you had a structural inspection done on it?
Oh, you did? What, sir?
Have you had a structural inspection?
That is what Mr. Ghost is supposed to do.
My concern would be if there's a structural problem that, that either can't be fixed or potentially, again, goes back to that hazard issue, right?
I can tell you what he told me. He said that most of the time on these, these ones, he said it can be fixed. He said it can almost always be fixed, the, the kind of damage that's on this house. So I think that it would look entirely different if it had a roof on it. I have a man who has agreed to help me. He put a roof on it. He's a rougher, he's done it all of his life. Also, so I've, I've had people call. I've talked to people. I've talked to several people who are contractors and do this kind of stuff. And I believe that I can get all of it done. I would really like to have a hundred and twenty days, if that's possible. But if ninety is all that I can do, then I will do what I can.
One thing that the, the option that the council does have, if you're so inclined to do that, is I know that I'll be back in Stillwater on March the ninth. One thing that you could do, if you were so inclined, is you could table the public hearing and the resolution as well to a date certain. And in that period of time, require him to obtain the structural inspection and then get back with me. And then that might give the council some additional information.
Sure.
But if you, if you table it to a date certain, I believe that that will, and as long as he agrees, that would preclude having to provide additional public notice. Thank you.
My mother's in the hospital. So, you know, I have not seen her for, since she, she went to St. John's and, so, but. And but I think that if I have just a little bit more time.
Well, sir, I mean, it sounds like i- if you had some, if, if we tabled this for, I don't know, a month or two months, would that give you enough time to, to talk to Mr. Ghost, get your structural inspection done, figure out kind of what your plan would be and figure out if it's feasible, right? I mean, because-
Yes, sir.
It, it would either have to, you know, if, if, we can't allow it to exist in this, the current condition forever. So we'd have to figure out, can we get this done in a reasonable timeframe? And, and if we had you come back in a month, do you think you could have at least an, an idea from him? Or how long would it take you to, to get a, to get a sense of what needs to happen here?
Well, I believe that I could get a lot done. And as long as I'm still progressing towards a goal of getting it to be the house that I know it can be. That if I can get it to where it is not, it's, it, you know, it's, it doesn't have any glass that's broken in it. It doesn't have, it's got dead bolt locks on the doors. The, the front of this has already been painted, at least primed. So I think that just a little bit more time is what I need. So a month, forty-five days, two months, it's you guys' decision.
Okay.
Mine.
We have a building inspector who is very competent in evaluating these houses. And my recommendation would be that we would also send the building code inspector out to evaluate the property in addition to anyone he might hire to have a look at it.
Sure.
If the council would be so inclined.
Yeah, so if we, if we tabled this for six weeks, a month, I don't know.
Last week, March.
End of March. And, and what we ask you to do before that timeframe is to have your preferred contractor, whoever, go out and, and take a look and figure out what, what work needs to be done in order to get it up to code. And we send the, the building inspector out as well and get a, get a, his comments on, on what needs to happen to get the building up to code. And we figure out a plan, you figure out a plan before that time. And then you can come back and let us know at the end of March, you know, what the plan is, right? Because you may, you know, it, it may be fixable or it may be something that, that there's so much damage structurally that it, it just isn't, right? So we can make a determination at that point. Does that end of March, okay? I mean, would that, will that work with, we've got a lot going on.
When?
March twenty-third?
March-
Well, it's a study session.
Okay.
About April-
It's a study session, but we could still-
Why don't we just do the first meeting in April? Is that the second?
April sixth.
April sixth.
Okay.
Let's plan on having you come back April sixth and we'll, we'll have those inspections done and, you know, have a sense at that meeting whether we think it's something you can get done and when you can get it done, all that kind of stuff.
Yes, sir.
And make the determination then.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for all the things that have happened to Mr. Cole. And I, we are trying to help you in a way by encouraging you to have the inspections done before you put other money into the project.
Yeah.
Before you have the written recommendation that it is structurally sound.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Senator.
So, doing to make a motion to table the issue?
If, if you would please table not only the public hearing but also the resolution as well, please.
So you, you can table both items in one motion?
Item six F and, or excuse me, item, it's not really numbered on six.
It's not really numbered, just, just state that, that address and the resolution, which is six, seven F, excuse me.
So I'll make a motion to table the hearing on, on thirty-three fourteen East Fourth Avenue and resolution CC dash twenty twenty dash seven to April sixth.
Second.
We have a motion to table these items until April sixth, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is tabled. Thank you, Mary Beth. Beth Anne called you Mary Beth. It's been a long night already. All right, that takes us to item, uh, let's see, goodness gracious, where are we? Seven G? Does that sound right to everybody? Item seven G is resolution CC dash twenty twenty dash eight, which is a resolution adopting a plan for one-hundred percent renewable energy and clean energy goals for the city of Stillwater. This would relate back to our discussion earlier with the Ready for One Hundred Committee.
Yes, bless you.
We're still here, too. We're still here too. All right, so we have a, a draft resolution. I, I suppose this was submitted by the group in terms of what this draft resolution says.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, what's everybody think about me just reading through it? And then we can talk about it a little bit. What's that sound like? All right, well, I'm going to read this, uh, resolution, uh, in draft form. CC dash 2020 dash eight, a resolution adopting a plan for 100% renewable energy and clean energy goals for the city of Stillwater. Whereas the city council, Stillwater City Council has responsibility and trust through the public vote for the protection of the health and life of its residents and the promotion of common welfare. And whereas the objectives of the city of Stillwater Comprehensive Plan include the provision of adequate light, air, and water and to secure safely, to secure safety from fire and other dangers and to promote health and the general welfare. And whereas the city of Stillwater Comprehensive Plan recommends working with the natural environment to meet the needs of today without compromising the needs of future generations and to acknowledge that without proper stewardship, our way of life may not be sustainable and that natural resources should be conserved or preserved to prevent a loss that cannot be replaced. And whereas consensus exists among the world's leading climate scientists, that climate change caused by emission of greenhouse gases from the human activities is among the most significant problems facing the world today. And whereas costs for tapping renewable energy are decreasing as the technology advances and once established, maintenance costs are sustainable. And whereas renewable energy represents one of the fastest growing employment sectors and creates opportunities for good jobs. And whereas the harmful impacts of climate change are disproportionately felt by the economically disadvantaged residents, people of color, indigenous peoples, immigrants, the elderly, children, and the homeless, and people with physical and mental health conditions. And whereas energy efficiency, community solar, and rooftop solar offer the opportunity to equitably, to equitably distribute resources, address poverty, stimulate new economic activity in Stillwater, and lift up those most impacted by high energy costs. And whereas more than 90 cities across the nation have made commitments to transition to 100% clean energy and Stillwater strives to remain a leader among its peer cities. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Stillwater that the city commits to transition to 100% clean renewable energy in the form of wind, solar, and other renewable sources and energy efficiency measures. I, within the elec, within the electricity sector by 2035 and, uh, within all energy use sectors, including heating and transportation by 2050. Be it further resolved that the city, together with Renewable Energy Task Force, will develop a plan by January 31, 2021 to meet the clean energy goals through a transparent and inclusive stakeholder process that includes community members from organizations and groups most impacted by our current energy systems. And be it further resolved that the city will participate in regulatory proceedings and state legislation to advocate for rules and policies that support the city of Stillwater's energy goals. And be it further resolved that the city will work with the Grand River Dam Authority to accelerate the transition to renewable energy and minimize dependence on fossil fuels, including but not limited to participating in regulatory proceedings to express city preferences for clean energy goals and opposition to any non-renewable energy projects. That is the text of this resolution. Councillors, is there comment, discussion, or questions?
Robin, I think I just want to say thank you. I've been quiet this evening as I've, uh, listened and thank you for all you've done. And I think, um, uh, special thanks to Carol for what she did for this. And a special thought to her.
Mr. McNichol, you look like you want to say something?
My one, one serious concern over this, we've invested $70 million in a plant out at, uh, the northeast part of town and that plant is fired by natural gas. And 35 is not that far away.
It won't have paid for itself by 2035.
No. No. And I, I, I've got to tell you that it is, it is state of the art. Um, it is the cleanest fossil fuel, uh, plant that at least today can be built. It's been replicated by other places. And it's been replicated by other places to be used in, in concert with wind energy. Because there is no, there's currently not a really good, inexpensive, climate-friendly way to store electricity. The batteries that currently exist work and they work well, but they are pretty toxic in terms of what they're made out of. And there's a problem getting rid of them. And they're expensive. To replace the batteries in, in a Tesla is about $16,000, the S model. So to have enough to store electricity and not have cogeneration would be pretty difficult.
Well, I mean, I get that, but this isn't a resolution to, to solve the science behind the issue. It's just a resolution to, to support, uh, moving that direction.
Well, and, and I'm, I think that moving that direction is a good goal. But the only thing I'm concerned about is actually being able to do that with that plan.
I really like the resolution. And I do hesitate a little bit to committing to 100%. If we just change, uh, commits to transition to clean renewable energy in the form of, to, to the best extent that we can with the formation of the task force. I mean, I would, I would really like to have the task force look at this and, um, before we actually adopt the resolution. You're, you're shaking your head, Robin? Yeah.
Finally, yeah, please.
Yes, the, uh, the action items that were in my presentation earlier, the, the first action item was to, um,
Legitimize the task force.
Re, well, even before that, to, uh, uh, ask the city council to resolve to study the, the, uh, transition to renewable energy. So, um, I know we submitted that draft proposal in November. And, you know, upon further reflection, I think the best idea now is simply to have a resolution to study the situation for a, for a designated period of time. And yes, to, um, legitimize and, and formalize the membership on the task force. And set a period of time to study. And, and, and then we would hope to have, to be able to, um, ha, have a resolution, a city council resolution with some specific, more specific goals about greenhouse gas emissions and, and, uh, clean energy.
I, I really like the idea of being able to put language in there that's more specific to Stillwater.
To Stillwater, yes.
More realistic to our goals and our hopes and our dreams. And it's more feasible, um, that really becomes something that we aspire to and, and hold ourselves to as opposed to language that might seem a little less specific and, um, to us.
Yes.
That, that opportunity to do that would be a really good thing, I think.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I was going to say that this resolution, uh, without the specific dates and without the 100% language, at this point at least, makes fine sense. I mean, to just say, we resolve that we commit to transitioning to clean and renewable energy, period. And then further resolve that the city, maybe we just say that the city will appoint a renewable energy task force to develop a plan by January 31st, 2021, to meet clean energy goals. I mean, without the specific dates in there, it really, I think accomplishes what you, what you were.
Do we need the resolution then to, to establish the task, to formalize the task force? Does that require a resolution?
Yes, you, you need to actually bring back a separate resolution to, to form the task force and establish the parameters under which you want the task force to operate and study. So
Robin, did I?
That's, this, this resolution is written tonight, won't necessarily do that, doesn't establish the task force.
Right.
Did I understand you to say earlier, you would like us to advertise for additional people to be involved?
Not advertise, simply, um, in a similar way that, that happened with the recycling task force. Invite people to, to express their interest and apply.
Do you want the same mix?
Sorry?
You want the naysayers too?
Yes.
That's good, because I, I mean, that's what we want, right? And we do want a similar, you know, a well-rounded community discussion.
Of people, yes.
It's not just folks who really strongly believe this, but also people who, who might offer.
Right, we, we need to make a strong resolution, a strong agreement that works for the entire community.
So how about if we do, take some time before next meeting? Alter this up a little bit, actually make it a point, a resolution that we're going to appoint a task force. Would we do it before we have the people? Or do we have to do the resolution once we have the people?
Well, we do the resolution before we have the members. So we can start working on that.
We can do that and have it ready for next meeting.
Okay.
And do a resolution then. We're, we're going to appoint this task force. We're going to look at this. We're going to study these issues. And then we'll tell people, let us know if you want to be on the task force. And we can get a, we can get a group appointed by the end of the month. You know, and I mean, if that's still, what is the, what is next month? March?
March.
March.
That gives you 10 months?
Well, in that case, it might be a good idea to, I think it would be a good idea to give the task force a year.
A year, yeah.
So whatever date the, the creation of the task force, maybe shoot for a year from then to have a, a plan, to present a plan.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. McNichol, will there be a staff person, um,
Yes.
assigned to this?
Yes, and if we can find one, a facilitator.
If you went?
Yeah, if we can find one, a facilitator. We're currently working on that.
Okay. So a staff person and a facilitator?
Excellent. Thank you.
And a, a council member, right?
That would be, that would, I think, be important for achieving, yes.
For sure, yeah. Okay, well, um, we'll work on revising the resolution and we'll have it on for the agenda for next meeting.
Okay, that sounds great.
And, uh, we appreciate you, again, making the presentation and sticking around and having the conversation with us.
Thanks. Thank you. Yes.
Come on up.
Henri, yes.
Sure. Can, can you come ask it at the mic so we?
The recommendations would be a year from now. But if we have some short-term recommendations that we could make, that makes sense to everyone. Would it be possible to go ahead and present those before that deadline?
Absolutely.
Because I think there are some short-term things that we can actually achieve very quickly that I think, uh, pretty much is a no-brainer that everyone would agree to.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, I think if the task force at every, any point along the way wants to come make a interim presentation and, and recommendation, that we could certainly find time to do that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you guys for being here. Appreciate it.
It's actually sometimes helpful to have, uh, midway reports.
Sure, yeah, we will want to check it.
Especially over a year.
Yeah, yeah.
So do we, we don't need to?
No, I, I pretty much know from what you're telling me where we need to start with this.
Okay.
We can get it ready.
Okay, so that takes us to item 8A. Ordinances on first read, 3449, and ordinance closing the east 330 feet of a platted 10-foot utility easement in block four of the Watson Heights addition on property addressed as 821 North Main Street. Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3449 to second reading?
Second.
We have a motion of a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is advanced to second read. On second read, ordinance 3445, an ordinance amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code, Article 13, Overlay Districts, Division 3, Westwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, to amend Section 23 dash 275.13, off-street parking.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3445.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3445 is adopted. Item nine, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Norman.
We could actually pass on item one, uh, until next week, if that's all right with the council.
Not going to bother me.
Because I've actually made some progress on that and I'm not quite ready to move on there. So on item two, we request an executive session pursuant to 27, excuse me, 25 OS subsection 307 B4 involving confidential communication concerning pending, uh, action styled Williams v. City of Stillwater v. Block 40 South LLC, case number DF118653, Supreme Court of Oklahoma. It's my opinion that, uh, just public disclosure of this matter will incur, will impair the ability of the city council to, uh, process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigating or pers, litigation or proceeding in the public interest. Number two, uh, request an executive session pursuant to 25 OS subsection 307 C11 for the purpose of confirming on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services, would violate the confidentiality of the business. Items four and five, request for an executive session pursuant to 25 OS subsection 307 V2 to discuss labor negotiations for the Fraternal Order Police Lodge Number 102 and International Association of Firefighters Local 2095.
You sure that's it?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Mr. McNichol.
Yes, sir, thank you. Represented from the State Department of Commerce, recently reached out to the city to say how helpful and accommodating the Stillwater Public Library and Community Center were during his visit. I'd like to thank the employees who helped this state official for their representation of the city's standards of excellence. Also, look for your U.S. Census postcard in the mail mid-March. You can use this card to complete your 2020 census and bring your tax dollars back to Stillwater. We've talked about this a lot. It's about to start happening. We really need people to fill out those census forms.
I visited six OSU classes last week and talked to students in all of them. And there were a number of students in those classes that did not realize that they could or should fill out the census as residents of Stillwater. For all the students watching right now, I'm sure there's a ton. You absolutely should fill out the census as a resident of Stillwater. In fact, the Census Department regulations, uh, say that you must. So, uh, we'll continue to spread that word. And I know, uh, certainly those of us who are here are probably tired of this, the subject. But we have, through the end of May, you know, June, we'll still be dealing with follow-up census stuff. So it is super important. I'm, I'm, uh, unfortunately, the census cards will be mailed out in Stillwater around spring break. So, you know, make sure you check your mail and pick it up when you get back if you're out of town on that stuff. So we'll talk much, much more about that. Councillor Zanotti?
Yes, uh, rain barrels are now on sale for pickup through the city of Stillwater. These barrels capture water from roofs for future use, which could save you money on your water bill while being environmentally friendly. Go to Stillwater.org/news for details and how to order your barrel.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
In fiscal year 2019, the city striped 12,364 feet of Stillwater roads. You may have been stuck behind one of those painting trucks. This is just one task among the many that our Public Works team juggles. Learn more about Public Works at Stillwater.org.
Thank you very much. Councillor Weblick?
Yes, sir. 2019 numbers have just been released for the Stillwater Regional Airport. Uh, and it's been a record year. Over 58,000 passengers flew through the airport last year, which is an 8% increase from last year. More people than our population.
Entire city holds.
Unbelievable. Uh, go to Stillwater.org/news to read more, or go to aa.com to book your flight.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Jaloski?
Very cool. As spring approaches, here's your reminder to register your storm shelter and sign up for our emergency alert system. Be informed to Stillwater if you haven't, if you haven't already. The Stillwater Emergency Management Facebook page is another good follow. It is a really good follow when there's weather happening, when all the floods were happening last year. Um, you can find all this information at Stillwater.org/EM.
We had a little thunder. Was that last night or the night before?
Last night, a little rumble.
It's like, uh-oh, spring, spring's coming.
Yeah.
Storm season. All right, if you're looking to buy a home for the first time in Stillwater, we have resources available to you. Sign up for our free home buyer education course to learn everything you need to know before owning your first home. Additionally, you may qualify for financial assistance. Learn more at Stillwater.org under the Development Services tab. That's all we've got on announcements. That takes us to item 11. Is there a motion to enter executive session on these items except for item A?
A motion to enter executive session.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session? Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we'll now enter executive session.